Good evening, everybody. Happy Monday. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, July 18, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Invocation this evening is going to be given by the Reverend Rob Cornellson of the Holy Trinity Anglican Church. And good evening.
Good evening. We are a prayer book tradition, so I selected one of the prayers out of our prayer book. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, you sent your Son amongst us to proclaim the Kingdom of God in cities, towns, villages, and lonely places. Behold and visit, we pray, the community of South Haven. Renew the bonds of charity that uphold our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders, delivers us from poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice and mercy. And at last, bring us to your holy city, the new Jerusalem, where we shall know perfect unity and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. And good luck at your next meeting. And now if you're able to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Scott Smith.
Here.
I make a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins.
Second.
Motion, second, to excuse Letitia Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. She's excused. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I think with the addition of item 13A, which is the discussion of height restrictions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 13A.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's approved. And next, if you feel especially safe in this meeting tonight, it's because we are swearing in a new police officer. So, nice to have everybody here tonight. And we are swearing in our newest officer, Officer Tyler Debacker. So, good evening, everybody, chief, and all of our officers.
I would like to introduce our newest officer, Tyler Debacker, badge number 611. And we're going to have Megan come in, swear him in officially.
I'll have you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer of the city of South Haven, Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Wonderful. Thanks.
While I still have Officer Debacker here, I just wanted to read a brief bio of him.
Great.
So, after high school, Officer Debacker enlisted in the United States Army. After completion of his service, he enlisted and graduated from the Detroit Metropolitan Police Academy in 2019 and was hired by DPD, where he has worked for the past three years. Officer Debacker has commented that he chose South Haven Police Department and South Haven because what he has viewed as a very welcoming community and police department. And most importantly, one person that he would like to recognize is his fiancee, who is here. He would like to come up. So, who, he says, regardless of the numerous early days, late nights, canceled plans, and missed special occasions, has always supported and trusted him, yes, he chose the career of a police officer. And he says that he is only standing here today thanks to her. So, I'd also like to.
Very good. We're glad you're here. And we're all resources. You have a lot of outstanding officers to learn from, and just hope you have a lot of fun here. So, welcome.
Thanks for choosing us.
Absolutely. You chose the right side of the state, by the way. Good call. Thanks again. Thanks, everybody, for coming for this part. Are you guys going to stay or are you going to sneak out? I'll let you sneak out if you guys want to have work to do. Thanks again, everybody, for coming. Be nice to him, Chris. I say that jokingly. All right. All right. Next, we're going to have a construction update from Superintendent Kevin Schooly. So, Kevin, I have only heard it maybe once an hour. What are they doing over there?
We're moving a lot of dirt.
There's not a dinosaur dig? I've been asked a lot of questions.
No, it's not an archaeological dig. There is a lot of work going on at the school complex right now at the high school and at Ratcliffe Field. So, there's a new team room going in at Ratcliffe. That's on the north side of the bleachers. The brick walls are up, or the block walls are up. Soon will be the brick facing, and then followed by the mechanicals and electrical and plumbing. So, it is moving right along there. Also at Ratcliffe Field, the renovations to the Arkon Field House, those will be handicap-accessible restrooms. Those were in desperate need of repair. And so, we're pleased to be moving forward on there. The underground plumbing is in. It's in place. Again, the mechanicals will come next, and we'll go from there. Also being done at Ratcliffe are the bleachers. We're putting in handicap-accessible bleachers for our community that's a little bit mobility challenged. The ramps will be a lot easier way to get it out of the high school home field bleachers, and we look forward to that. Also, the track, the track is currently in demo phase. So, the synthetic track has been ripped up. The base will come next. And then we're scheduled for August for reinstallation of the base and then the synthetic track that goes on top of it. So, our timeline, we're doing okay. We haven't had a great deal of supply chain issues just because of the nature of the projects. There's not a lot of steel. Now, we're getting into that part with the mechanical systems. So, I'll keep my fingers crossed on that. I will tell you that we do plan to host all of our fall events at Ratcliffe Field. But you know, it's primarily football and soccer over there in the fall. You know, we may have to contingency plan around some things, but we're dedicated to holding those hallmark events that I think are important to the kids and important to their families, that they participate in those activities at Ratcliffe Field. You'll notice at the high school, if you go to McDonald's or you just drive by, there's a tremendous amount of earth being moved at the high school complex and then also across the street at the Aleworth Complex. The foundation is set for the new restroom facility at the high school, where actually, as we speak, I think one of the tennis courts is being poured this evening. That's exciting. Fencing demo is taking place at the baseball softball complex. And that's selective fencing. All of the fencing is not coming down. Some of it is in just fine shape and does not need to be replaced, but there's a fair amount that does, and that includes the backstops and padded areas. There will be a sidewalk that's currently being installed along the south end, the south side of the high school that runs parallel to the high school building. And some of the teachers may see it, you know, new lighting and a new sidewalk that'll run parallel with the school there, I think will help with drop off and pickup and really brighten the place up, especially in months like February. Next up for us, and we've been busy since spring in the design development phase for Maple Grove, Lincoln, and North Shore Elementary Schools, those are scheduled for summer of spring/summer of 2023. Those are heavy mechanical. There's a lot of mechanical work that'll go on there. It's one of the reasons we pushed it forward a bit because of the supply chain issues that were coming down at us and pricing. So, we're trying to maximize the bond dollars from that May 21 bond, where we moved from 4.85 debt mills to 4.5. So, we're really trying to maximize those dollars. Lot of mechanical there, though, heating, cooling, ventilation, a new PA system, fire alarms, roofs at Maple Grove and Lincoln, and then a secure entry system at North Shore Elementary School. So, while, you know, we continue to do the work of educating kids, this is going on, and we're excited. We're thankful for the community's support. I want to say thank you to the city, specifically the Department of Public Works, who is, we've had to collaborate with when it comes to issues like plumbing and electrical, and they've been wonderful to work with. So, my compliments to the city for their assistance in this project. And if there are any questions, I'd certainly entertain from the council.
Question? I'll just say, it's long overdue. I'm excited to see it happen. And again, as we talk about attracting people to this community, no matter what age, that's where it needs to happen. So, and I know we still have work to do on some maintenance of some soccer fields and cleaning bathrooms.
The relationship between the city and the school district's been really positive. And we could really tell this summer, as we've worked through it with the DPW and some of your city staff that have really contributed to helping this out.
Good. Very good. Well, thank you. We're excited.
Thank you for your work.
I just, sorry. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for especially doing the accessibility items. And I love seeing that and would love to see more of that, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Have a good night. Thanks for making the time to come in. And that takes us to the consent agenda, items A through F.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E with separate approval of Consent Agenda Items F.
All right. So, we'll pull item F for now. So, let's do a, give a second for that one, sorry?
Second.
All right. So, we'll second that. Let's do a roll call on that one first.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
I want to make sure what I'm voting on. So, we're saying A through E will be on it. F will be removed.
Yep. We're going to discuss F right now.
Got you. I agree.
Okay. Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. So, Griffin, just want to tell us what item F is, how it came to be, and then we'll vote that out.
Sure, I'm happy to. So, on January 17th of this year, City Council voted to establish an ad hoc committee to review possible regulations for houseboats and floating homes in the city of South Haven. Following the establishment of that ad hoc committee, city staff reached out to the various boards and commissions that were identified at that time, City Council, Planning Commission, and the Harbor Commission, and sought volunteers or interested parties from those committees. At that time, I think everyone's workload was a little heavy, and we were struggling to get people who were willing to participate and who were available at that time. Because of a number of other projects and council priorities that were advanced, that was put on the back burner for a while. And over the last week to 10 days, this has been brought back up to city staff's attention, and this slate of potential appointments is brought before you all for your consideration.
Do you want to throw anything or just?
Just wanted to make sure that, my understanding is, we tried to get people with a variety of backgrounds, including people that are involved in harbor, some of the harbors in town, to get the most perspectives as possible.
That's correct. So, the slate that's brought before you all includes a member of City Council, a member of Planning Commission, a couple Harbor Commissioners, as well as a few other folks with various affiliations with local marinas or the maritime industry, as well as some individuals who have expressed questions or concerns about some existing practices to try to give us a real holistic group that can both be educated and review this topic and make eventual recommendations to City Council.
My question would be, will we know if there's any financial interest or conflict of interest potentially among the members of the committee?
Can you tell me a little bit more about what you're looking for?
Well, it's about houseboat regulations and some of them becoming short-term rentals. I guess I would wonder if there are developers or short-term rental property owners that would have a potential financial gain from.
There are developers and potential private, or, and private marina owners on this list, yes.
Can I help Wendy a little bit, maybe be a little more specific? Scott Sinar, if I'm pronouncing his name right, represents HDC Residences LLC for a PUD amendment to the Harbor Club. The Harbor Club Marina has the only two houseboats currently advertised for short-term rental. They have, and then they're advertised by Blue Water Vacation Rentals. They have a floating cottage, number one, and they have another floating cottage, so that's two. Scott Sinar is not a resident also of this town. The same registered agent for both HDC Residences and Blue Water Vacation Rentals is Anthony, I'm sorry if I mispronounce his name, LaFredo. Blue Water Rentals has many rentals within Harbor Club. There is an appearance of financial interest to Scott Sinar for a specific outcome of allowing houseboats as short-term rentals. So, you kind of have to follow the money, in my opinion, on these types of things. And I'm not suggesting there's foul play. I'm just saying it appears that there could be a conflict of interest here. So, not being a resident and having these financial connections, I think we could find a different candidate for that position.
So, I've spoken with the city attorney, and Mr. Sinar, as this is an advisory committee and there's no formal decision-making, that's necessarily going to be done. At the most, they're going to make recommendations to City Council. We're not concerned about a legal conflict of interest, but if you all would like to not appoint someone or appoint someone else, that's all of your prerogative. I will say again, I know when city staff was compiling this list, it was our intent to get a variety of perspectives put on there, including owners of private marinas.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Is there any preference, comments from this board?
Frankly, I would want to hear the opinion of a private marina owner. I think it would give the other perspective to the committee, is my first thought.
And it is an advisory board, so no action is taken, it's just advice to this group. So, I guess, or is there another marina owner being suggested, I guess, by this group? Or I guess we could?
I don't know of any off the top of my head, but I just would want to make sure we're all clear, everyone's perspective, and if there is that financial interest that that's taken into account.
I just think we could find somebody that has, as I think Steve just said, has knowledge of the marinas, could be involved in the marinas, but not be involved already directly, indirectly with short-term rentals on the marina. It just seems that we may not have a completely unbiased view. And there's a lot of people that we could, I would think we could choose from. Wouldn't be hard to get a different candidate, would it?
At the end of the day, appointments are at the discretion of the City Council. So, if you all would like to appoint the slate without Mr. Sinar, you all have the ability to do so. We'd be happy to take it back and see if we can find other interested parties. I do believe we have another person on this list who has, or at least has in the past, had some ownership in private slips in the South Haven Harbor. So, I think we've got a variety of perspectives on there still, if you would like to move forward either with or without Mr. Sinar, but that decision's up to you all.
I feel like it would be in our residents' best interest to proceed without Mr. Sinar, just so we're very transparent in where we stand and what we want.
Is that a motion?
I agree with Wendy, and it doesn't mean he's done anything wrong. It's just that I'd like to get somebody without any connections with marina, short-term rentals that already exist, so.
Is that a motion?
I will make that into a motion.
All right. So, we have a motion, a second to approve the slate minus Mr. Sinar. I guess, if you guys want to bring another name next week, we could do that. Sound fair?
Well, can we clarify that? I'm sorry. So, without Mr. Sinar, that still gives us seven. I mean, that'd be enough to move forward. Are you all wanting an eighth to find another one? Are you comfortable moving forward with the seven, so that the slate minus Mr. Sinar?
I'd prefer that it got started. It's six months behind already. So, proceed without Mr. Sinar.
I'm fine with starting without him.
Okay. Then, in that case, we've got a motion, a second to proceed, and we need a roll call.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Takes us to new business. City Council will be asked to consider the following special event applications. First, we have Special Event 2022-18, which is the Ward One Community Action Committee's Ice Cream Social, to be held on August the 28th, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. till 5:00 p.m. at Elkenburg Park.
Make a motion to approve Special Event 2022-18, Ward One Community Action Committee's Ice Cream Social.
Second.
Motion, second. And Griffin, what do you got?
Sure. As a short background, the Ward One Action Committee is seeking a special event permit to sponsor a community ice cream social instead of their annual community picnic. They've done the community picnic for several years, but with COVID still existing, they're pivoting a little bit. There are over 10 organizations and churches that will help facilitate this event, as well as live music, canopies for shade, and other opportunities to build relationships and celebrate unity in the South Haven community. So, they have worked with staff to prepare their application. You will note included is the waiver request form for the special event fee. Other than that, I believe we have representatives from the Ward One Action Committee this evening who may be able to speak more to their event.
You're hiding in here somewhere. Good evening.
I'm Beverly Brown, 564 Indiana, and I just want to say, Ward One Community Action Committee was formed in 2010, and it was there to help people better their community, and that's what we've been doing all these years. And we are excited about being back again, and it can be better than ever. We've even got Bronson South Haven Hospital going to be helping with some events. And we use so many community organizations that are there for kids, that are there for families. And the purpose of this year's is just to get back and renew relationships and build new relationships, and we want to do it on a nice Sunday afternoon in our beautiful Elkenburg Park. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful event, and we'd invite all of you to come if you can, because it's just wonderful. We've got people volunteering, donating the ice cream, the cookies, and the water, and we're just making it simpler because, you know, COVID, and we want to be as safe as we can, so, yeah.
Very, thanks so much. I appreciate it. All right. Any public questions or comments on this event, other than what flavors are going to be available? We figure that out when we come. I'm kidding. Oh, I'm teasing you. You're good. There you go. Eight flavors. You heard it here first. No other public questions, council questions? What do you got?
My only question would be, is the closure of the road okay, and the barricade request to the city staff and police?
My understanding is the application was done in conjunction with city staff, so that it being brought before you this evening, we're comfortable with what's being proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We got a motion, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Thanks so much. Next, that takes us to Special Event 2022-14, which is the addendum for the Blueberry Fest Parade 2022, to be held on August the 13th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. with a revised parade route.
Make a motion to approve Special Event 2022-14, addendum, Blueberry Fest Parade 2022, to be held on August 13th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. on the revised route.
Second.
Motion, second. Griffin, new route.
Sure. Just quickly, the annual National Blueberry Festival was approved, its special event was approved earlier this year. At that time, the planning committee was not sure if they were going to be able to put on a parade as they do normally, so it was left off the application. This addendum before you this evening is the request to add the parade back, which I think is quite exciting for our community. There are a few minor changes to the route. I believe they shortened it slightly, but I do know we have a representative from the National Blueberry Festival Planning Committee who's here this evening, if you all have additional questions.
Anybody have questions? I saw it pretty straight ahead. Walk us through it. Good evening, Kim.
Just real quick, just a reminder that we still need more volunteers for the Blueberry Festival, so if anybody's willing to help out, go to blueberryfestival.com. Thank you to city staff for meeting with us and determining what would be a safe route. As you'll notice on the map, this year, we're not going down through the island. That is always a little bit tricky, so that's one of the reasons why we shortened that route.
Okay. Thanks, Kim. Appreciate it. Public questions on this? Nothing. Counsel? Nothing. All right. Motion, second, to approve 2022-14, which is the addendum to the Blueberry Festival Parade Route 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Next, City Council will be asked to set a public hearing to occur on August the 15th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a resolution to vacate Road Right Of Way adjacent to 206 Black River Street.
I make a motion to set a public hearing to occur on August 15th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a resolution to vacate Road Right Of Way adjacent to 206 Black River Street.
Second. All right. Motion, second. So, this is just a set in public hearing, just want a quick overview, and then we'll...
Absolutely. So, earlier this year, it was announced that All Seasons Marina had been sold to Gull Lake Marine, a well-respected business in West Michigan. After hearing this exciting news, staff has been working with Gull Lake Marine on a number of items, including utility easements, and whether or not Road Right Of Way adjacent to the property at 206 Black River Street could be vacated and used in conjunction with some of their future plans for the property. Included in the packet is a map of the existing right of way adjacent to 206 Black River Street, and it is highlighted that there is the 66-foot of right of way, which is standard for a residential road. Upon review, it was found that there is right of way in addition to that standard 66-foot that could be vacated, provided that a utility easement is mated for the vacated area. The proposed resolution would be considered, is being recommended to be considered for approval at the next meeting in conjunction with a package of other items associated with the property.
Good update. Thank you. Any public questions on what we're talking about? Counsel? We're just setting the date, so, okay. We've got a motion, a second, to set the public hearing to occur on August the 15th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is set. All right. Now, good stuff. City Council will be asked to receive an update on the city's economic development projects. I know I've got Griffin, Zach's coming on, so come on out.
Yes, thank you. So, it's Economic Development Day here at the city, I think. So, I'm going to give a short update on some of the city's ongoing economic development initiatives and then associated with the following agenda item. We have the Executive Director of Market Van Bier in here to give you all a short presentation. But to go ahead and get started, and coincidentally, right in line with the previous agenda item, an exciting development in the last year in the economic development front for the city of South Haven is associated with the sale of All Seasons Marina to Gull Lake Marine. City staff had been in contact with Gull Lake Marine for several months leading up to this sale and found that the plans, that their plans for the site closely align with the community's vision and goals that were set forth in the public engagement sessions in 2019. This is a really important piece of property in the city, particularly for the sustainability of the maritime industry in South Haven. So, we are very excited to have a well-respected business like Gull Lake Marine choose South Haven. There are a lot of... There are a lot of historic Marina properties up for sale in Michigan and along West Michigan. We've seen several other notable sales in the last year, and I'm just really excited to share that Gull Lake Marine chose here, and we are excited to welcome them to the South Haven community and look forward to the big plans they have for the site moving forward. Moving on, talking a little bit about some entrepreneurship workshops that the city has been part of over the last year. So the city of South Haven, in partnership with the South Haven Area Chamber of Commerce, Lake Michigan College, and Greater Kalamazoo Business Resources, offered a series of business workshops and business roundtables to help local entrepreneurs and small businesses grow. A total of 54 individuals and eight businesses attended these roundtables, and there are plans to conduct more this fall after learning from this first round, figuring out what we can do better, and I'm looking forward to that. I would like to give a special thank you to Debbie Howe, Mike Neese, Dana Hullinger, and Michelle Mullard for all making this possible. They have really picked up the ball on a lot of these and served as facilitators, and again, just highlighting how fortunate we are in South Haven to have a lot of very impressive and accomplished people in town that are willing to give back, both on boards and commissions and in other ways like this. Moving on to the next one, city staff, in partnership with the South Haven Area Chamber of Commerce, started a young professionals group over the last year. I know this is a kind of a personal point of pride for Megan and myself, and we're very excited that after many years of conversations, this is something we were able to get started. The YP Group hosts monthly social hours and coffee hours, as well as other periodic events. One notable example was we connected with fellow young professionals from across Southwest Michigan and Northern Indiana earlier in the spring in association with the 2022 KitchenAid Senior PGA Championship in Benton Harbor. And at this point, we have 35 people on that contact list and are probably averaging, oh, 10 to 15 people per event. So it's just getting started, only been going for about six months, but if anyone is interested in learning more, please reach out to us. We think this is a really important way to promote networking and community amongst young people who live and/or work in the area. Moving on to some projects that have been advanced since last year, towards the end of 2021, the city council and the Township Board for South Haven Charter Township entered into a 425 agreement to promote the revitalization of the M140 corridor all the way to Blue Star Highway. That's something that the city had been talking about for many years, and that was initiated towards the end of last year, and since then, a commercial rehabilitation district had been put in place to create some additional incentives for folks looking to reinvest along the Broadway-Lagrange-M140 corridor. Seguing into number five here, I can say that we do have a number of communities in the area, or excuse me, a number of businesses in the community who are taking advantage of the commercial rehabilitation districts that have been established. At this time, we now have two established commercial rehabilitation districts, one that encompasses most of the downtown area, and then the new one that was put in place in conjunction with the M140-425 agreement that extended down the rest of that corridor. Within the last year, we have had three applications for commercial rehabilitation tax abatements approved by city council at 511 Huron, 708 LaGrange, and 764 LaGrange. Number six, going to highlight a little bit of activity with Lake Michigan College. First off, as many of you remember, the city of South Haven reacquired just short of seven acres of land from Lake Michigan College. This property is located in the I-196 Business Park, and it is being marketed as available for potential job growth and investment in that area. We've had several conversations with folks interested in that property. To this point, nothing has advanced to the point of bringing proposals to city council, but the RFP is still available on the website. Links included in this report. Additionally, the city of South Haven is working with Lake Michigan College to evaluate the use of the South Haven campus and explore the creation of a local advisory council. I know there's interest in many folks from discussing the future of this campus and the potential of creating a unique flagship program that could help give it an identity. One possibility of that that we are pursuing is actually in partnership with Gull Lake Marine, looking at the possibility of establishing a marine tech program in the South Haven area. Number seven, I won't talk too much about, because we have Zach here to speak more to it, but this last year was the first time the city of South Haven had a formal agreement with Mark Van Buren. They're actively involved in business retention visits and supporting the citizen advisory panel associated with the closure of Palisades Nuclear Power Plant. A link to their annual report can be found here, but I'll defer to Zach and let you all hear a little bit more from him here shortly. But in segue to that, something that city staff partners closely with Market Van Buren on is our regular visits to local businesses. Our goal with these visits is to build relationships and understand the needs of these business communities. We do track them and follow up on identified challenges or needs after those visits, and staff are happy to help businesses starting, relocating, expanding by connecting them with other applicable resources or parties. We do have a business resource sheet that, at this point, is a little over a year old. We update it regularly, and it's available on our website, and something that I know our local businesses are provided with quite regularly. I'm excited to share that from these businesses, city staff has learned that there are several local businesses currently exploring options to expand in the community and add jobs. At this point, there are some that have not been shared publicly yet, so I won't go into that in more detail, but I think we are in a really good place to hear of some exciting announcements here in the next year. But one example we can share is Revere here in town, which is just an amazing business for folks who don't know much about what they do, but within the last year, they obtained site plan approval from the Planning Commission for a 22,000-square-foot addition. So it's great to keep them in town and have them continue to do more here locally. Moving on to nine, broadband expansion. So efforts to map broadband availability in Van Buren County at the parcel level began in April. This is another one that I know Zach and Market Van Buren have been working really hard on, so I will let Zach speak a little bit more on this. But a final report on the findings of some of this work is expected in the upcoming months. Prior to the work being advanced by Van Buren County, staff was negotiating a proposal with Merit, a group comprised of 15 Michigan colleges and universities, whose mission was to assure high-speed internet was available throughout Michigan. They were going to help the city conduct a feasibility study for the city proper, as well as some neighboring townships. However, to avoid the duplication of efforts and be fiscally responsible, city staff put this work on hold to support Van Buren County's broadband expansion efforts, and once we get that data from Van Buren County, we can pick that back up and decide what, if any, more we need to do here locally. Number 10 is the Overton Site redevelopment. I know this is something you all are quite familiar with, given the number of times it was brought before this group. But on March 22nd, or excuse me, March 21st of this year, city council adopted a resolution to approve a plans unit development for the Overton Site at 229 Elkenburg. That resolution allowed the Habitat Company out of Chicago, Illinois, to apply for tax credits from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority to help advance that project. Mishda did alert the Habitat Company that the application would not be accepted this round due to a technical requirement, and moving forward to help the Habitat Company prepare for the next round of tax credit applications, city staff is working with the state of Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or Eagle, to pursue funding to conduct some additional environmental site assessments to strengthen that application moving forward. Moving on to the central business district, a couple that I'll just highlight quickly is the Hales redevelopment. At the beginning of this last fiscal year, city staff engaged the MEDC Redevelopment Services Team to provide some pre-development assistance to the property owner of the former Hales property, and a number of public engagement activities were conducted, as well as some preliminary designs and zoning review done. A site-specific strategy was finalized and completed in September, and at this time, it's in the hands of the property owner to determine where they would like to go next. I'm still very excited about the plans that have been shared at that time and what that could mean for our downtown, so exciting to see people are interested there, so we'll see what comes. Talking about our downtown, we do have an exciting new building that's going to be built at 412, 414, and 416 Phoenix Street. It's a new mixed-use building with both commercial storefronts and 12-for-rent apartments. This was approved by Planning Commission earlier in the month. The city of South Haven remains a redevelopment-ready community. This is an ongoing process. We were certified, but there's a lot of work that continues to have to be done with that that is largely undertaken by the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Department. But for this evening, I would just like to highlight one benefit of this program is the $30,000 Technical Assistance Grant that the city was awarded to help fund the comprehensive zoning ordinance update that city council approved earlier in the month. And I won't go into these in more detail, but just some other projects in the economic development realm that city staff, with the assistance and leadership of city council, continues to pursue, is city staff is participating in the citizens advisory panel associated with the nuclear power plant. City staff is promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, including a number of new partnerships and a equity assessment. Those, there is a staff report included that you all can see more, a more comprehensive update on our DEI initiatives was provided a few months ago. And the city and the township continue to partner with Ryan Kilpatrick to explore other options associated with housing, as well as city staff are working to sell the former Michigan State Police outpost to Berkshire Hathaway, who has plans to redevelop it into a real estate office and a pocket park. Whew. I think I will be done, and I apologize for all of the language, but as you can see, I think we have a lot of exciting developments in the economic development front here in the city of South Haven. I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail that you may be interested in.
Don't apologize for that. That's good stuff, and it's fun stuff, too. Nice being involved with these businesses, so it's an excellent update. Questions? All good stuff. Businesses are trying to grow, we just need people. So I think we're up to the next item. If you don't have anything else, I'll call up the next one. City council will be asked to consider the approval of a one-year agreement with Market Van Buren in the amount of $11,228.39 for supplementary economic development services for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
I'll make a motion to, oh, lost my place here, to approve the one-year agreement with Market Van Buren in the amount of $11,228.39 for supplementary economic development services for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Second.
We've got a motion, we've got a second, and we have Zach. Good evening, Zach. How are you?
Good evening. And we do have, I do have a presentation here. I believe that Griffin's going to be pulling up. Go to the first slide. So thank you for your support of the work we do, and you're one of 29 municipalities in the county, and appreciate the work that you, that the staff does in conjunction with us. So a good question is, what is economic development? A lot of times, people ask that question, and certainly if I travel on certain vacation or whatever it might be, people ask, and what is economic development? Well, this is essentially the answer I give right here, is three things. And every successful economy has these three things. You have to have strong businesses that employ talented people in vibrant communities that talent want to live in. We know the three have to work in a symbiotic relationship. If the three don't work in a symbiotic relationship, we know communities that have failed over time because they didn't pay attention to one of those three things over time, and we know some of them. So one of the things we do is we make sure the three are in balance and they're in, stay in a symbiotic state, and that's at a high level what economic development is, because we sit in the metal oven and make sure that we work to balance those out. So how does this work, though? You know, in action, how does this work? We generally are that gear in between two different things. You have your businesses and communities at the local level, and then you have your partners and resources out at the state level, federal level, and sometimes even a regional level. But how do the two connect up? Generally, our businesses and a lot of our small communities, you have a very good paid staff here, but a lot of our smaller communities throughout Van Buren and Cass County do not have the ability to know about all these different resources, and neither do our businesses. Our job as economic developers are to be very knowledgeable in these areas. So when we're sitting down on these retention visits that Griffin was talking about, and we hear this is a challenge on utilities, or maybe wastewater permits, or whatever it might be, we have an exact idea of what resource we can lever, or lever we can pull for this particular area. So essentially, we are that resource in between that makes sure the information is moving between the businesses and communities back to the resources, because we're going to hear a lot of things and say, well, we talked to five different companies, and all five have said the same thing, that they needed help in this one area. Well, we take that up to maybe whatever department that would be at the state level and share that with them and represent our local community. Likewise, when there's resources and grant opportunities at the state level, it comes down, our job is in to push that back out to our businesses and make them aware, and even help them with maybe applying for a grant. That's part of the work we do. So that's how it works essentially in action, and how the resources, information's done. Let's see here, if I can get the information pulled up here. So looking about, so some things that we have been able to accomplish here, we'll look at for this particular year. Wage impacts, $28 million worth of wage impacts. Now, that's between jobs we've helped retain in our community and/or created in our community. Other part of that is in the capital investment. We've helped attract $156 million of capital investment in our community. Overall, that's $181 million economic impact, and what we do is we put the wage impact, wages that have stayed in our community or have been brought back to our community, plus the new capital investment. This could be a facility, this could be equipment, things of that nature. Together, that's about $181 million economic impact for the community. This is made up of nine business attraction, retention, and expansion projects that we've worked over the last 12 months. Essentially, that's 696 jobs created or retained. So the projects that we've announced this year, Welch's, Welch's had a large expansion this year, GLCC, TCB Food Processors. Now, White Chips is an interesting one, because this was a good example of a business that's located in California, has had their rent tripled on them again, and they said they can't afford to be in California anymore, while they're also looking and saying, where do we buy our potatoes from? We buy our potatoes from the Midwest, particularly in Michigan, at Walter's Potatoes. So they bought them there, and they're looking at our area saying, well, maybe we can locate here. So we found them a facility, helped them rezone at the township level, offered them county-level brownfield services to help change out the facility. Then we were able to get them two different state grants to help them with locating to the state. So we attracted a company from California, brought them here. We actually were competing against Ohio, so if anyone's an Ohio State fan, I'm sorry about that, but we beat out Ohio on this one, and we're able to win that project. And that's an example of your economic developer who understands all the resources at the very local level, municipality, all the way up to the state level. So it's an exciting project, but we did several different things. We've also had put on municipality training, so we've brought in speakers from expertise in areas such as brownfield, landbanks, other areas, to be able to talk about things such as housing. That's an important subject, right? And I know the mayor was there also, and we were able to talk about some of the tools that'd be available. So that was one of the things we do, is we organize these type of efforts. Site promotion, we promote our community at conferences nationally, the National Guild Conference, also at the area Developers Conference, other things like that, too. Our job is to be the cheerleaders for the community outside of our borders here. Slide. So another thing we do is work with our local communities and businesses on grants, and this is just a high level. We've been able to help with the pursuit of $2.6 million worth of grants this last year. You don't win them all, but you certainly don't win them if you don't actually put in for them and have someone with expertise in helping you write them. So that's... So that's countywide, that's community-wide, that's the things we do to help with that. We've also helped establish a countywide strategic fund, so that we take part of our revolving loan fund, and as that's becoming defederalized, we have a place to park that money. So almost up to $100,000 worth of money in that strategic fund. Next slide. Just high level, here we look at economic development impact, all right, that we've had over time since the inception of our efforts has been $248.7 million. Now, before this, the county had a little bit of an economic development presence, but not a really strong one. So we've been able, over the last five-plus years, been able to work on making sure that projects are coming here. We're not missing out on projects like projects such as the Wine Chips one. We're making sure they're landing here, and we're competitive on a regular basis. Excellent. So what have we done in the city? So what have we been doing in partnership with the city over the last year? We've been a part of over 30 business retention and expansion visits with key employers throughout the city. So our efforts include, you know, bringing the mayor out on visits, city staff, making sure that they have the ability to connect with these businesses. And this is, doesn't even account for a lot of the emails and phone calls and things that we put in with a lot of these companies. We've off, we've been able to support things such as exporting grants, automation technology assessments and grants, things such as Industry 4.0. You've probably heard about making sure our businesses here in South Haven are prepared for the advent of Industry 4.0, and several other MEDC incentives. If we look at community development, we've facilitated three meetings with the P cap. So that's, our role has been putting the meetings together, getting the invitations out, making sure the technology and speakers are lined up and the meetings go smooth. Our team has been leading that effort, because we do know that Palisades is going to be impacting this community and the county overall. And we're doing economic impact study with University of Michigan and the Planning Commission for the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. We're happy to take part and play a small role, but we were able to play a small role in the Gaul Lake Marina Project, too. And what's one of the things that I like to say is that we're an extension of your team. In Griffin calls, we respond. And that was one of the things that we were able to get on a call, and we talked about some different tools such as the revolving loan fund to help with that project. So looking at business attraction, we know that that's kind of the big cool thing, you know, let's bring businesses to the community. You do have some sites available right now, and we know that we need to potentially evaluate, you know, where are some other sites over time? But, you know, you have the 220 Elworth Drive project, 1310 Kalamazoo Drive, and the South Haven, overall South Haven Industrial Park, you know, what are those vacant lots? And there's a three-in-three, overall six-acre lot over by Lake Michigan College. It's one we're looking at. So what are the challenges? We know some of these, particularly two of them, 220 Elworth and 1310 Kalamazoo Drive, you know, there's some challenges with the age of the facility and also the location where it's at. So those aren't necessarily easy ones, but we think we can have some solutions with looking at, what are those suppliers? What can, what suppliers can we attract to those sites? That's part of it, too. Next slide. What are some of the themes that we got out of this? Challenges, opportunities from these visits? We know people are talking about the closure of Palisades, that's one of the things. Of course, tight labor market. And I'll just put a plug in for the work that we do. Recently, our economic development manager, who's been working with Griffin quite a bit, has taken a great opportunity to be promoted to an executive director role in the state of Kansas. Well, if you have some, some folks that are talented in the city of South Haven, we'd welcome the opportunity to have them come to work for us doing economic development, serving our community. So I'll put that cheap plug in for the day, too. But I, like everyone, we're in a tight labor market, so that's something. Supply chain shortages, insufficient infrastructure in some cases, not always, but in some cases. So that's something that the city helps to solve. Increased labor and supply cost. Not only is it tight, but it's going up at the same time. Market globalization, so there's also other opposites happening, too. You're all, you're trying to be global, but at the same time, you need to reshore. Transportation cost, of course, housing's an issue. Next slide. So you have before you, it basically is, you've made a motion, you've supported it, and it's to support the city of South Haven being part of our municipal investment structure that we've put in place. So we know that not one person should have to pay for all of economic development, but what we've been able to do over time is come up with what we call a formula based off from your taxable value and your population. And that is for township, cities, and villages. That comes out to, if every one of the township, cities, and villages were to invest at what we call our composite rate, they would produce about $76,000 total for our community. Now, we've tried to make this scalable. We have like the Village of Bloomingdale, can't pay a lot, so they could never pay as much as the city of South Haven, and, and that's part of it, is making sure it's scalable and that every community has the ability to be a part of this effort. So that is the way we have it structured here. What we've done is we've held your rate steady at last year's rate. Now, we did not increase it, and I think it's went up about $500 as your taxable values went up, the rate goes up, but we did not increase it for this year. We've kept it the same as last year. So that is a high-level overview. I know you've got a lot of things on the agenda, but I do want to take the time to say I did also pass out this flyer here, talks about the resources and services of how we do it, and glad to entertain any questions you may have. Yes, sir?
Yeah, my question is, about two months ago on 60 Minutes, they had one of their 15-minute, 20-minute pieces on population changes, and it talked about the five biggest cities in the United States are all losing people, specifically younger people. Why? Because what you alluded to in California a few minutes ago, the cost of labor, the cost of housing, the cost of everything is astronomical there. I've been working there the last three months a lot, and that's all people talk about is the price of homes when you're there, and the price of gas, which is higher. So my question is real simple. People today are leaving the cities, especially younger people. They can, many of them live anywhere in the United States, they work out of their homes. You hear all the time about Vermont, New Hampshire, all these small towns gaining people, coming and buying houses sight unseen, living there, working out of their home. What do we need to do to attract more of those kind of people? It is hard to bring new companies here, as you know. It's easier to pay money to companies we have that keep them and do what they need. But to bring young people who work out of their homes seems to me easy pickings, and the big cities are losing them. Why aren't they coming here? Do you have any idea on what we could do different?
We need more available housing stock. If we have it, people buy it.
That's what I was afraid you were going to say.
If you have it, people buy it. That's flat out. It's an affordable housing stock. I remember on a visit we had, and the mayor was with us at a company in town, the vice president of this, of this large company stated he couldn't buy a house in the, in the city of South Haven in his budget range. He had to move out of the area, find one there. That's a challenge. Now, why can't we figure out how to maybe partner with the township, or maybe its surrounding cities, or whatever it might be, to provide that? I don't know what that would look like, but that's the basic point, is that builders are also have a price point on building a house. And generally, it's much, it's a higher price point in order for them to punch out a profit. And guess what? They end up selling it. So if you can sell a house at a higher price point, make a better profit margin, wouldn't you do it? So we have to figure out, which is one of the things we did with the mayor was at this session we did back in the winter, on how do we bring that price point down and incentivize developers to be able to build more housing units? And we have different tools in the county that we have available, the brownfield program, we have a landbank. These are things, if you put them together, you can bring that price point down. These are things that we're looking at, councilmen, and that's, I, you know, it's on my mind these days. We're looking at these options, looking at things such as modular homes, and people say, wow, modular homes. They're not the modular homes that, you know, our grandparents were looking at back 30 years ago. They have a lot of character, but they also bring the price point down quite a bit because you're building them on scale. So these are things that we could take a look at. You might not want them in, you know, some of your high-end neighborhoods, but not everyone's going to live in a high-end neighborhood.
It was interesting. We had four students that came here and did an independent study on housing and economic development. And one of the things they did, they put together a little chart, and it showed the price of homes in, in South Haven versus the average in the United States. We are still cheaper by over $100,000, the average home in the United States. So the question I would have then, or the statement I'd have, is, is it the price of the homes here that's scaring people off, or is it just that there isn't enough homes for some obvious reasons? You know, it's one thing to say, I'll pay another $50,000, because it's cheaper than coming from LA, where I'll pay $200,000 less than I'm paying in LA, but I can't find a home here available. So I don't know which is a bigger problem. I have my own guess, but I'd love to hear from someone like you, and maybe that's a question for a later date.
Sure.
But I would question whether it's the price of the homes right now, or it's the availability of any home for someone to buy.
Well, in short, the answer is yes, but I would say the bigger part of that yes is availability, just flat out, there's just not enough stock available.
That's what I would think.
And that's, that's all over the place. That's a problem all over the place. And part of that is, is that, and, and, well, why is that, right? Someone might ask the question, why is that? What I'm hearing is, and this is anecdotal, so bear with me if someone in the audience says, well, Zach, I got a full report here, and you're wrong, but anecdotally, baby boomers are aging more in place, which means that they're not moving out of their homes, maybe as other people have, people are living longer. So they're occupying their homes longer, which is a great thing, by the way. I hope to do the same. But that also means that the generation that's coming behind them, that would be their grandkids, who are peak millennials, so millennials who are basically average age of 30 years old, that are having kids, looking for homes, moving out of the big cities, saying, well, I'd like to move in back to where I came from. But the thing is, grandma and grandma still living in their home. And that's nothing wrong with that, but the question is, we just need more stock then as we do that. So we need to increase stock, we need strategies on increasing stock. Most of the time, that means we need more land. Now, some communities, I would say, like the Village of Lawrence, we're looking at other strategies there, such as infill projects. So I doubt the city of South Haven has a lot of vacant lots inside the city, but infill is the problem in some of these other small communities. So it's a multi-pronged strategy where some more well-to-do communities, like South Haven, has the need for just more land in the townships. Let's work more at the townships to establish more communities versus maybe it's Village of Lawrence, Decatur, Bangor might be saying, we need infill program. That's a different deal.
Tell us about site selectors. People may not know what that is. You mentioned it in your slide, so just to say.
Sure.
Why that's helpful with our vacant land.
I apologize for any jargon I may have used there. Site selectors. Site selectors are people who have made a career out of working with corporations and saying, okay, you know, Mr. Sleeper's got it, he wants to expand his building 50,000 square feet. And I know the company he's worked for, you know, they've done that in the past, or recently retired, right? Is that true? Yeah. And you can say, okay, we're going to put up another facility somewhere else. What they want to do, they say, we need to be within fifth, I'll say, 50 miles of, of this, this bigger, bigger company, and it needs to be near an interstate, and needs to be all these different criterias that would go into it. But basically, they give it to someone who does all the research and data for them and says, here's five sites in the Midwest that meet what you're looking for. And then what happens is, you know, what we've done is we've given them them sites, and if we make the finalists, working with these site selectors, then we get in this competitive mode where we're looking at some of the incentives you talked about tonight. But that's how companies look at it. They give all the criteria they're looking for, and then they ship it out to a whole bunch of communities. Our job as economic developers is to put together a really competitive package so that we compete for those projects. That means your land has to be ready, utilities, studies, you have to have all these things in order. There's a saying in our, our world that if you don't have, if you don't have a site, then you don't have a project. So that's basically it, and you have to have a complete site. That's the site selectors world. Sometimes corporations do it in-house, sometimes they do it, outsource it.
Sounds good.
I have a question for you. If there's like a small business in town who wants to utilize your resources, are they able to just contact you guys? Do they pay a fee for those resources? How does that work?
Yeah, so you guys, with your, your, your contribution, and the contribution of the county and the other folks, we have over 40 investors in Market Van Buren, by the way. Those 40 investors are the people who allow us not to charge that small business a fee. So absolutely no cost. We just contact our team. There's no, no wrong door policy, right? You call me, you get, you get support, you call anyone, one of the members of our team, you get support.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Now, that includes, I'll just say that, that includes me being able to then say, okay, let's find the best resource for them, because I admittedly don't know it all. So it could be me saying, I want to work with this group or that group, making some referrals.
Great.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Any other questions? And if not, we're good. Thanks, appreciate it. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public questions, comments on this one? All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second to approve the one-year agreement with Market Van Buren. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, no. It's approved. Thanks, Zach. Have a good night, safe travels home. All right, next, we've got a, this is kind of a big one, but we'll take it. City Council is going to be asked to receive an update on fiscal year priorities 2022, 2023, housing development, short-term rentals, as well as organizational improvement. Goal here is to get a little update and then let us just give staff a little guidance, thoughts. We're not going to solve them all tonight, we're just trying to give staff some input and feedback as we go forward on those top three priorities, and priority number four we just heard all about. So Zach just covered that one. So Griffin, how you want to kick it off? I know we start with housing, you want to do one at a time, you want to rip through all, I think probably maybe one at a time would be easier, I don't know, housing development's first on the list?
Sure, that works for me. So starting off with priority number one, housing development, included in the staff memo are the few sub-points that were included in the adopted fiscal year 2022, 2023 priority list. In regard to some notable updates for you all, in addition to some of the updates that we talked a little bit about earlier in the economic development update, because as you heard, I guess now from both Zach and myself, economic development and housing go hand in hand. They, they, we have to think about them together in a lot of ways in communities like South Haven. But in regard to a few updates for you, city staff's continuing to work to advance the Overton redevelopment project. Just last week, the Habitat Company sent a letter formally requesting to extend the due diligence period as contemplated in the purchase agreement. This was accompanied by the additional $10,000 in dollars in earnest money required by the agreement. City staff is also working with Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity, not to be confused with the Habitat Company out of Chicago, who recently opened a restor in the area, in effect expanding into Van Buren County. Habitat for Humanity has a successful and established system to provide housing in communities. It starts with locating a restor in the community. They recruit volunteers to help work in this restor, and that helps them build their network, both of volunteers, but also of folks who may be in need. The city staff intends to connect with this Lake Shore Habitat and do what we can to connect them with local churches and other faith-based organizations who they have historically worked successfully with in other areas that they operate. And then lastly, in regard to updates for housing, the city of South Haven and South Haven Charter Township continue to work with Ryan Kilpatrick to explore the creation of a joint housing authority and identify parcels of land that may be ripe for affordable workforce or attainable housing development in the greater South Haven area. If you want to stop there, I'm happy to, or we can, we can go into others. I'll, I'll take direction from council.
Why don't we just go ahead, and that way we can get feedback from folks, I guess. Any other questions, like, I guess, where are we at with Overton? What we'd like to see going forward? I mean, I know, I've been, we've met with Ross a few times. I think we all in this room understand that we are landlocked, that future expansion into the township and working with the township makes logical sense, so it's just a question, what does that look like? So nothing's been decided, that discussion will happen in open sessions at another time, but obviously that discussion makes sense. I know, I guess, I was just curious on what the council, I know that we've, two other things we're talking about, like, kind of like what we'd like to see going forward for this year. I would like to have a lot more explanation of housing at the higher AMIs, opportunities at that 80 to 120. AMIs, opportunities at that 80 to 120, kind of that true middle that we're, I feel we just, we need more of that. And so what, what opportunities exist for that? We have a few things that we're working on, but not quite ready to share, but we're trying to get a, you know, we've identified some possibilities, so I guess I would like to see more in that 80, 120 related. I guess I would like to maybe have some time with Ryan and maybe review what housing studies we do have, how current they are, and how, you know, I mean, stuff's changed so much, even since we've had these housing studies, the housing prices, I mean, everywhere have gone up just ridiculously, compliments of COVID and.
Yeah, I'd like to see something happen with the Sherman Hills property and expand it there, and you talk about modular homes, maybe changing zoning or something like that, I'd like to see that really push that area as well.
And he has made, I guess that's, you bring a good point, some recommendations were made regarding, how do you encourage, you know, and he's made those suggestions, maybe that would be another discussion, some of his recommendations that have been made.
As we're going through this rezoning codification and everything, he's, he spoke in, I've heard a couple presentations now where he said, we need to change, adapt our zoning to the changing times, and, and I think that makes sense to look into that a little bit harder too, and push for that a little bit more, whether it be smaller homes, or whatever the case may be, with less of a footprint for more housing, or whatever the case, so.
I agree with that, and I feel like there's some good information out there about communities that are kind of going in that direction and modernizing to get those housing units available. I feel like duplexes and some items like that would be good to look at as alternatives to the traditional single-family home, that would still fit within our neighborhoods. So I'd like to see that happen.
I was just recently reading in the Michigan Municipal League Magazine about the toolkit, I think that the, the, I don't know if it's MML or the, or Michigan Housing is putting together to kind of help communities develop housing, and I think changing our ordinances is a good thing to look at, but we need to also make sure that we don't deviate from what we have in our master plan, because some of that stuff is, is kind of directed, or not, is recommended by the master plan, and you have to kind of go through changing the master plan first in some cases.
Good point. Yeah, good point. Any other thoughts, suggestions? Find developers to build cheap houses, they don't exist, so, very good, kidding. All right, how about, let's go to number two? We're going to do all three, and then we'll comment at the end.
Sure. So number two is short-term rentals, again, the two bullet points that were called out in the adopted priority list are included in the staff memo. In regard to updates from staff, prior to the beginning of the 2022, 2023 fiscal year, city staff started working with Western Min- the Western Michigan University Creisher Center for Social Research to develop a community survey. This, a draft of this survey was reviewed by city council earlier in June, and the proposed survey was structured to build on a number of the questions asked in 2018 to help understand the impacts of short-term rentals in the community. The plan for this survey is for it to be mailed to a random sampling within the community. I believe they should be going out any day now, and after those mailed surveys are returned, an online survey will be made available for others to respond. As noted in the staff report, those, those surveys are expected to be mailed out at some point this July, with a final report, hopefully brought to council by the end of October. To address one of the other noted items for priority number two, city staff has also been working to identify a qualified consultant to compile and conduct some economic impact data, that's been specifically requested by council. Be happy to hear if there's some specific economic indicators or impact areas you all are interested in. I will tell you all, to this point, I think city staff has contacted, oh, close to a half a dozen, if not more, qualified consultants, and you may not be surprised to hear, but everyone is very busy. So we are doing the best we can to try to find a consultant who not only can do the work we would like them to do, but do it on a timeline that allows us to bring it back to you all to inform decision-making associated with this fiscal year. So that's something we're, we're working on regularly. And then just last week, really excited to share that we had some University of North Carolina students, some really, some really impressive young people from the Morehead Kane Scholarship Program present their findings on their summer civic collaboration research project on short-term rentals, housing and economic development, and for their kind of final deliverable, they created a website that was presented to a Real Pact House last Wednesday. A link to that website can be found in the staff report, as well as on the city's website, as well as a video recording of their, of their presentation can be found there as well. So thank you to, I know many council members were able to attend that presentation, I think that was a real good experience for us, but more importantly, I, I think they had a good experience here in, in South Haven for the eight weeks they were here. And then lastly, I know some members of city council have expressed interest in hosting a workshop on the topic of short-term rentals to discuss proposals that have been submitted and/or input from the community. At this point, I, I think it's, it's pretty comfy for, for me to say that this is a topic that council members feel a variety of different ways on, and city staff's going to do the best we can to advance the direction that we get from a majority of council. So at this point, city staff's really requesting any guidance that council may have for us on where you all would like to go from here.
Okay, appreciate it. Well, yeah, I think part of this, the goal of tonight is just to, I mean, we have the impact study, so the question, any specifics, and some of us have sent in some thoughts and ideas, what we'd like to see, whether that be, you know, if you see a reduction of X, what would be the impact on Y? Home prices, you know, if something sold, camp your rental, what are the impacts? Who do we think is going to be able to backfill the homes? Just a lot of things like that, so I know some of that we've discussed. Previous discussions, as this has gone before, I think we've gone through the nuisance issues, but it's kind of now back to the ratio, is it a hard cap, issues of distance, those are some of the things that have come up. I know there's at least one or two more I wouldn't mind chatting about, so I think part of it is also to help give staff some guidance on where do we want to, where do we see discussion moving as we go forward? And is it just to a workshop, or do we want to see staff do a little research on how we got to where we got? Because a lot of it is just, we finally have good data, so we know now exactly what we've got, we know where they are, so we can now talk about it. So thoughts, ideas?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Steve.
My initial thought is, is, as I'm sinking into it more and more, I think some of it has to do with zoning, and some of it has to do with short-term rentals. So I think possibly, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to going to a workshop, I think Joe and I have said it several times, where it seems a lot easier to talk in a workshop than it is in, in this formal setting, where we can just throw out the ideas, hear from the public, hear from, hear from different groups, and just have that roundtable discussion, if you will, in a workshop-type form. I would, I would be for that, so that we can talk openly without the formalities, if you will, and discuss, you know, what are the issues? And why are some people not wanting more short-term rentals? Why are some people wanting less, this, that, and the other thing? Just get right into it. What are the issues? Is it, is it zoning allowing certain heights homes, lock coverage, this and that, or is it the fact that the, they don't have permanent year-round neighbors? You know, so I mean, I think there's a lot of topics that we could discuss there, maybe, and I, I would hope that it possibly brings the community a little bit more together, having these open discussions as to what the real issues are, in, in, in a respectable way.
All right.
That's all I, I would suggest.
Take it.
Yeah, before I make a statement, I, I agree with Steve. Steve talked about workshops months ago, and I thought it was a great idea, because it's always been frustrating me that we can't, as a group, talk back and forth informally and, and share ideas. So I prepared something I'd like to say. Four years ago, we tried to attack, we tried to address short-term rentals. A lot has changed in four years. Airbnb is bigger than it ever has been, and it's all over the world. I stay at Marriott's all the time, 89 nights year-to-date at a hotel room, and now they're sending me emails wanting me to rent homes by the night and by the week. The biggest rental company in the country, and they want me to rent homes. I don't rent taxis, I use Uber now. I went to Chicago last week, I can rent a car by the hour, I can rent a bicycle by the hour, I can even rent a motorized skateboard by the hour. That's how much things have changed. Back here in South Haven, there is not a day that I walk my dog. There is definitely not a day that I go to Meyer on a Saturday, someone doesn't come up and want to talk about short-term rentals. Somehow squeezing peaches and oranges brings out short-term rentals in our community, and they always want to come up to me at Meyer and talk about short-term rentals. It is so obvious that it's on everyone's minds. Over 550 residents took the time to fill out a questionnaire to 3,600 residents. If you subtract the residents that aren't living here now, because I talked to Kate and the list of residents was incorrect, it really represented about 20% of everyone that lives in this town that votes filled out that questionnaire, and 80% came back saying they were concerned about short-term rentals, varying degrees. I have nothing but respect for the NNN group, Neighbors, Needing Neighbors, because people, residents, took the time and effort to go door-to-door to talk to people, to put signs up, to send out surveys. I know some people have criticized some of the questions. Please know that the questions were done by, in this group, retired lawyers, retired teachers, retired senior management at corp- big corporations. The questions were reviewed by a PhD at Western Michigan University, who has done surveys twice nationally, and has a book written based on the surveys that she has done. So I think it was a credible first attempt to see what the residents in this town want. We can, we can say good or bad, but surely it was a good first attempt. When the city pays Upjohn money, the Upjohn Institute, to do research, and I've read it twice over, I think we owe it to ourselves and to the community to at least review the findings. We haven't done that yet. We even had four college students, which Griffin alluded to, do a study, and I thought it was a great study. I've read it twice, I have two pages of notes from it, and I thought they made some really good points. They even went back into the history of diversity in this town, and some of the statements were shocking to me, and why we are where we're at with housing. What I got from the group is, most importantly, it doesn't matter what I think sitting here as city council. What matters is everybody in this room and everybody in the community. My job and council is to listen to the residents. And what I heard are some clear messages, and here's what I'd like to share, that I have learned from many people. Number one is, the issue of the total number of short-term rentals in this town has to be addressed, whether you want more or less, we can discuss it, but the group, the residents surely want to see less short-term rentals in this town, and a number of 250 versus our current 390 has been talked about. And what I think is so good about discussion that's been had by the NNN group, and what its other neighbors have talked about, I have not heard one resident say they don't want any short-term rentals in this town. That has never been a discussion I've had with a resident. They all say, short-term rentals are here, they're a necessary part of the tourism and the community, and we need them. But the question is, how many do we need? And most people think we need closer to 250 than close to 400 we have now business short-term rentals. And we can do it a very fair way, and again, I've learned this from the residents. So I'm espouting what I think the residents are saying, and what I happen to agree with. We can do it through attrition. Attrition simply means, if you own a home, and you sell that home, and you have a business license, that doesn't automatically give into the next homeowner, you have to apply for it. And if we already are above that threshold, and if it's a number 250, then the next person doesn't get a business license. If you elect not to have a business license next year, and you already have one, then that goes into the pool, and if we're above that threshold, you don't get one. But every person that has a business short-term rental right now will not have to give it up. They get to keep it until they're willing and ready to give it up. So it could take five, 10, 15 years for short-term rentals to go down in number. Nobody that has a license, I have to say it over and over again, will be hurt, because they put their money into buying a home, they're renting it out, they get to keep it, no one is saying, you spent all that money, now you're going to lose it. You get to keep your license, but if you don't renew it, and you're over some agreed-upon number as the community wants, then it doesn't automatically go to someone else. And that's how we bring the number down organically, rather than harming anyone. The next question is, the issue we have to discuss is density. Density isn't a problem if you have nobody renting on your street, but it is a problem if you live in a three-block area and nine out of 10 homes are short-term rentals. There has to be some balance, not only in the number in the community, but how many are on any given block. So the NNN group came up with a number, right or wrong, but it's a number some of the community people have said, two per block. There should be a number that we come up with. Whatever we agree on, we have to have a number of how many can be on a block, because it's a whole lot different for somebody that has one in a two-block area and one that has nine out of every 10 homes, a short-term rental, because they look down the street, as people tell me, and the whole block is dark in, in seven or eight months of the year. The other issue that should be addressed, I agree with Steve, this whole issue of zoning, I don't even have to bring up all the, everyone in this room knows all the issues, we all know about the different homes that have gone up, the homes that have been enlarged. The issue of zoning, the size of the homes, the percentage of the lot being covered, those issues must be addressed. So bottom line of everything I'm saying is, I think our job up here is to listen to those, listen to all of the residents, and start to discuss whether it's a workshop, Steve suggested, however we do it, we cannot keep pushing the can down the street, we've got to start doing it now. It is our number two priority, starts in July, we've waited till July, so I just want to say, we've got to get it started. Thanks.
I just want to say that I agree with Joe, and appreciate how eloquently you summarize those things. I've had a lot of those same thoughts and conversations myself. Being newly elected this year to city council, I was campaigning last year and knocked on so many doors in my ward-two neighborhoods, and I'm sure I've said this up here before, but that issue came up over and over again without me even mentioning short-term rentals. People in my ward are concerned about how many are coming into our neighborhoods, and how much it changes the character of the neighborhoods and the fabric that they're used to in those neighborhoods. I really do feel like, I know we want to get all sides of the story and understand the economic impacts, but I also think that our priority needs to be the residents and what they want. If we are not listening to them and their needs right now, I'm worried we're going to go down a path that is not going to be good for the city or our neighborhood, so I would love a workshop to be able to talk about this, and get the community's input, and kind of go from there. I think that'd be great.
I also am on board with, with a workshop. I think anytime we can get together and discuss things, it'd be good. I mean, we do get a report every year on short-term rentals. I mean, we do get a report every year on short-term rentals, and in January, in the report, it did show that actually the number of short-term rentals, business short-term rentals, is down. It peaked in May of 2019 at four-seventy-eight, and now it's down to three-hundred-and-ninety, which is the number that we got from the report presented by the interns here from North Carolina for the summer. So, in 2018, we tried to find a balance. I'm not sure that we are imbalanced right now with short-term rentals. And I think it gets confusing because I think sometimes people think that in the wintertime, when their neighborhood is dark, it's because of short-term rentals. Well, I think if we reduce the number of short-term rentals, that doesn't necessarily mean that those properties wouldn't get bought up by second homeowners, which would mean that those properties would still be dark for a period of time during the year. And we have been doing things with short-term rentals. In April of 2021, the one-to-four ratio was, calculation was changed to actually reduce the number of short-term rentals, business short-term rentals allowed, from five-sixty-four down to four-eighty-seven. So, we continue to look at this and make adjustments to it. And then just in March of this year, the city council changed the short-term rental fee schedule, raising the business short-term rental inspection fee up a hundred dollars from five-hundred dollars to six-hundred dollars. So, I'm not on board that we haven't done anything on short-term rentals. We continue to look at it, and I agree we need to listen to the residents, but there's also other people involved, other stakeholders in the community, and it could be second homeowners who, even though they aren't voters, they do own property in South Haven, they do pay taxes, and I think they're stakeholders, and they do need to be included in the equation for this. So, that's my comments.
That's a good point. And I think as part of this, maybe as we look at our, maybe we can compile our list of kind of thoughts, suggestions, pros, cons, but maybe one of those things should just be added. What's the goal? I mean, obviously, is it year-round? Is it, because you bring that point. I think we'd be disappointed to think that would be the end result here. I guess the only other one I would like to bring up, that I've thrown out before, is I would like to make sure we have the discussion of downtown parking and short-term rentals, because back several years ago, we changed the parking requirements from two to one to encourage dwelling downtown, i.e. residential dwelling versus transient lodging. So, I just want to have that discussion about short-term rentals in the downtown, because I would argue we should adjust that number back up versus, I mean, the goal was to encourage living downtown, permanent living, kind of building the vibrancy. So, I would at least like to have that as part of the discussion. And other than that, if that's all we've got, we could take public comment on those three topics? Is there anybody, what do you got?
Priority three.
Oh, sorry. Number three, sorry, organizational improvement.
Sure, thank you. Organizational improvement, similar to the other two priorities. The sub-points that were adopted with the priority list are included in the staff memo. Really, the update we have at this time is that earlier this month, city council approved a contract with Williams &amp; Works, as well as accepted a grant from the MEDC to conduct a comprehensive review and update of the zoning ordinance. This project is going to be a priority for our organization moving forward, and will begin to be prioritized over the code of ordinances recodification process that was substantially initiated last fiscal year. Included in the memo is the committee that is being formed to advance this project. It's comprised of local residents, members of city council, planning commission, zoning boards of appeals, consultants, members of staff, and so on and so forth. They will conduct some initial reviews and make some preliminary recommendations to our appointed bodies. Those will be brought to the planning commission for review, discussion, feedback from the public, so on and so forth, before eventually being brought to city council for their consideration. Friendly reminder, similar to what I said a few weeks ago, this process is going to be twelve to sixteen-plus months. This is going to be a priority. I know we are dedicated to spending significant time on this, but as we see through many of these topics discussed today, there are a lot of questions, concerns, confusions related to planning and zoning that, going through this process, hopefully will start to clear up and address and set our community up to be successful or more successful moving forward. But with all of that, I respectfully ask for patience from all of you and members of the public, because I think we all want to do this right the first time. So with that being said, that's really my only update related to priority number three, but similarly to the other two, I'm happy to do what I can to answer any questions.
Questions on this one? Or guidance? How's that sound? I think that was part of it. When do you think this will, actually, I mean, when do you anticipate actually starting workshops?
Next week.
Oh, that's quick. All right, let's go. All right. I think the biggest thing we've, I think, ease of use, searchable, and obviously the issues related to, I mean, you, we've talked about all of them, so we've heard all those. So, I think if that's it, we'll take public comments. So, all right, on these three topics, we have housing, short-term rentals, and organizational improvement. Come on up, state your name, your address. You'll have up to five minutes to address us. And good evening.
All right, I'll start with housing. Nancy Knapp, 125 Elkenberg. The site assessment provided by Envirologic Environmental Consultants for forty-five-thousand dollars is intended to focus on planning for construction activities to help the developer Habitat achieve due-care compliance. City staff is pursuing a grant from Eagle to conduct additional environmental site assessment work. So, in essence, taxpayers continue to do the work that should be required of Habitat. This is not right. City staff is focused on getting this development off the ground, and they, in my opinion, have lost sight of the purchase agreements' requirements. Habitat is responsible for due-care, not the city of South Haven. Habitat and Ryan Kilpatrick are the experts in the field of housing development. Why do they need the city's help? Habitat has missed criteria for state funding, asked for a waiver of an important environmental impact statement, changed the original plan from workforce housing to subsidized housing, and cannot even provide home ownership options without involving outside developers. Why so many missteps in this entire process? To start with, this property never should have been zoned residential until the proper residential environmental analysis was done. The city council members that I spoke with in 2019 were not even aware that the Overton property was contaminated. This, to me, is dumbfounding. How can you start a project without looking into the environmental information that was provided in 2015? Yes, affordable housing is a beautiful concept, and everybody jumps on board, but responsible citizens have to look at the entirety of this project. Ryan Cerveta stated in his recent interview with the students from North Carolina that, quote, "We have the most subsidized housing than any other lakeshore community. Overton is not addressing the needs of our hourly workers who will be making too much money to live at Overton," end quote. So many missteps, waiving of the EIS, and now paying for the work that Habitat should have been doing through a grant does not sit well with many of the residents in this area. It is not the city's job or the taxpayers' money that should be used to resuscitate Habitat's failures. To continue pushing this through city staff, using city staff time and our money is reckless. Many mistakes have been made by city staff, planning commission, and city council by your own admission. We pay city staff salaries. Please stop making unilateral decisions that are not in line with the signed purchase agreement that is costing taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lisa Beck, 879 Monroe Boulevard. I'm following up on what the woman in front, or ahead of me, said, probably not as eloquently, but I don't believe that taxpayer money should be spent for Habitat again. We waived the fifteen thousand for the very important, in my opinion, environmental study. They've missed deadlines, and now we're going to pay forty-five thousand dollars for something that they should do. Habitat in 2021 made between one and two billion dollars, you can Google it, it's on several sites, business sites, Glass Door being one, they had between one thousand and five thousand, they were very big, their employees. They obviously have the resources to do this themselves without taking taxpayer money. I feel strongly about that, I don't see why we're bailing them out again, and I also feel that they are not the right company for this project. If they cannot have any skin in the game and aren't willing to pay fifteen thousand or forty-five thousand, and they make that kind of money, but they can't invest in our community, I have no faith or trust that they're going to monitor this whole project, which is very important. That land, by Eagle's own description on the website, is extremely contaminated. And if they are not willing to put any money into this project, why would any of the residents think that they're going to oversee the vapors and the ground and different stuff that is very, very contaminated and toxic? We heard from several people, including many of you, that the real needs in South Haven is affordable housing for that middle income that we're trying to attract here. This Overton site right now, you cannot have any families, you cannot work at any of the businesses that we're trying to attract, they make too much money. As you heard previously, we have the most subsidized housing of anywhere. I think we really should step back and see if this is what we want to do with the Overton property. I, as many of you know all along, have been for affordable housing, whether it's duplexes, as you mentioned, or it's single-family. I think that's what South Haven needs, that's what the project was from the start, is what the community and all those meetings got together and said, that's what was needed. Somehow this shifted from Habitat, a company that is not, and is very far from Habitat for humanity, in my opinion. I think we should rethink it. There was comments about needing housing in, within the city limits, sites, Overton would be a perfect site for that. It's near the schools, people should be able to have families and be able to walk to schools, it would be wonderful. So I think we should think about it. This is the company, and if we want to spend taxpayer money subsidizing a company that makes that kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Griffin, just want to share that, where that funding, where that grant came from.
Sure, I think there might be a little bit of confusion. The city staff is working with our environmental consultant, Envirologic, to seek some additional environmental assessment work on the Overton site. We have been in contact with the Habitat Company and other folks looking at that site to make sure that the data we're going to be collecting would be beneficial to that project or potentially other projects if this one doesn't move forward as expected. But the funding being sought for this additional assessment work, one, the assessments are being conducted, or if awarded, grant money would be conducted for the city. The fact that that information could potentially benefit this or other developments is a plus, but the work is being conducted, or would be conducted, for the city, and the funding being sought is from the Michigan Department of Energy, Great Lakes, and Environment, or Eagle. So technically, that is taxpayer dollars, but it's not local taxpayer dollars, and it's grant dollars that are available, it's going to be given to a project somewhere in the state, and there's a piece of me that goes, if that money's going to be used for environmental assessment work somewhere, we might as well get what we can to come back here to South Haven. So, that money's not local taxpayer dollars, it's state dollars that's being sought. And at this point, I think there's also some confusion because we have not been awarded funding to this date. We are confident we are going to be selected, we've been going back and forth with Eagle to shape the scope to try to make sure we can get the funding that we need to get the information that would be as beneficial for the city and the potential developments. But we expect to have more to share if or when we are selected for funding. At this point, we're still doing the best we can to pursue an opportunity.
Right. And then just to clarify too, as Zach talked earlier about economic development, part of our job is to, I mean, we have identified a brownfield site, and Zach talked about brownfields as a tool. And it is a tool we have, and we've used to redevelop that. So, it's what we are doing as a city to try to encourage development. So, we've talked about the need for housing, and we're continuing to pursue them. It's not the only project we're looking at, there are others, so I guess we'll just say that's what we're going to continue to push toward. So, anybody else? Sorry, Walt, you tried to come up, so, come on. If no one gets in front of you, go fast. Cartwheels.
Good evening. Walt Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard. Excuse my voice. Rose and I have been going at it.
That was your movie theater voice, sir.
I'm sorry, I had to. Dear Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager and Assistant City Manager, you received a copy of this letter via email, but we received no response back, so I thought I'd read it again for the record, for those here and those at home. Neighborhoods Need Neighbors is a group of concerned South Haven residents that wish to bring back balance into our community. Over the past several months, we've worked hard to identify a way forward that will fairly address the increase of business short-term rentals in the community. Through surveys, research, and discussion with other communities that have STR programs, we have concluded that we should amend our existing ordinance in the following ways. Number one, replace the one-to-four ratio with a specific cap of two-hundred-and-fifty business short-term rental registration permits. Number two, introduce a density element that will limit the number of short-term rental registrations/permits to two per block, in effect, the two facing sides of each city Under our recommended attrition-based approach to existing business short-term rentals, no existing business short-term rental registration permits will be eliminated. Everything gets grandfathered. Rather, over time, ten to fifteen years, short-term rental, short-term registration permits would decrease from the current number available, four-hundred-and-seventy-one is determined by the one-to-four ratio for 2022, to the new cap of two-fifty through attrition. Attrition would occur through two lapsing events. Number one, if business short-term rentals allow their registration permits to lapse. Number two, current business short-term rental owners, if they sell their property, the registration permits would not be transferable. The permits would go back to the city. If there are less than two per block, and if we are below the two-hundred-and-fifty cap, they can be granted a permit. We believe this approach is fair to everyone, residents, local businesses, all the property owners in South Haven. We would like to begin discussing this proposal, for which we have a draft ordinance at the next city council meeting as soon as possible. Sincerely yours. So I have a new ordinance here, it's all written. And then, you know, I've always told you that the other direction that we're following is the initiative referendum, and we do have signature sheets ready, and we're going to start moving in that direction also. So, that's all I got. I'd love to be involved in the workshop, or any of the other members of NNN, but we would love to work together with you on this. We do not, it's the last in the world, and I don't think you guys want us to do an initiative referendum either. So, I'd love to work together and get through this. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, have a good night. Anybody else?
Mike Campbell, 216 Erie Street. I'm going to talk about STRs, specifically two topics, stewardship and leadership. And specifically about the need for another economic impact study. We've already seen that you have study. We've already seen that you have the work that the North Carolina students have done. We already have seen that we have the survey data results from the NNN survey. We have the 2020 Upjohn Economic Research Study. And you have a new survey from Western Michigan that's going out. Quite a few data sources. I know one of those data sources is being questioned as being too general by some on, on this city council. Having read it myself, there's eighty-nine pages, lot of data, lot of facts. I know Councilman Reeser has actually cited from those facts. I want to cite some as well. Says, "A community's economic and community development effort should be focused on increasing the income and wealth of its residents. While these activities can include the attraction of new businesses and new residents who generate additional consumer spending and bring enhanced skills to the area's businesses, its primary target should be improving the livelihood of its current residents." Additionally, seventy-one percent of South Haven's working residents drive to a job located outside of the city. Meanwhile, seventy-five percent of people who work in South Haven commute into the city. Some of these comments are directly relevant to what Mr. Moore said about economic development, which I think is sorely lacking if you read through those first three bullet points of his first slide. I think we have a lot of work to do. And then, another one. In short, "The greatest challenge facing South Haven is not to become solely a beach town." And then, "We recommend that the city of South Haven consider restricting STRs to only certain areas in the city." This is just nine, the first nine pages. Again, there's an eighty-nine. But I'll leave the survey here with a, a pretty poignant statement on page twenty-three that I'll let you all think about. It says, "It is possible to love an area to death." So I guess the question would be, I know it, it hasn't been necessarily discussed, but by hands raised, how many of you actually have read the 2020 survey from Upjohn? I'll just leave one copy for the benefit of the councilperson who didn't raise their hand if they're interested in reading it, because there's a lot of facts, and they really should be considered. So I would suggest that instead of having an economic impact study that you pay for, make some good use out of the twenty thousand dollars that was spent for this one. The, the next point that I want to make in my remaining time is, I do support the notion of a workshop with public included to provide their comments. I think that one other thing you should think about, if you actually go ahead with it, with an impact study, think about daytrippers versus STR visitors. You need to profile the, the difference between the two in terms of what economic impact the daytrippers are bringing in versus the STR visitors. So please consider that. Now, let's go to the leadership side. And this is where the hard message comes. And it's only going to take a minute. You're all leaders. You were voted to be our leaders. Sometimes data is good. Sometimes data can be bad. You've already got five sources available to you. How many more do you need? Sometimes you drown in data. Sometime data is hidden behind. So I think what you need to do as leaders is talk to the people through these workshops, start opening up, and listen to what the residents want. Let me give you an example of a what-if. What if the founding fathers had Accenture, and McKinsey, and any other consultancy? We may not have been a republic yet because we were drowning in the data from them trying to figure out whether we should, should become a republic.
Thank you.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I'd like to say I agree with everything Joe says and Wendy. And another thing, don't forget the PUDs. There's four PUDs, Trailside included, that there's unlimited amount of STRs. Like I said before, right now, we have eight out of seventeen lots right now that are complete. And we could be high as eleven. That could be over fifty percent STRs. And when and if they get Phase Two done, it could be unlimited to even into duplexes. And another thing, I want to congratulate George, because he's on the Planning Commission, that they unanimously voted down Trailside at the last meeting. Trailside did not provide any more information than they did for the previous meeting, just a few tweaks, and it was very incomplete. And one of the things that's missing in the whole thing is, they never said affordable. These duplexes are supposed to be affordable. One of, one of their primary variances they wanted on the zoning was, instead of thirty-five feet houses and two and a half stories, they wanted to change it to thirty-five foot houses. Now, why would they want thirty-five foot duplexes? Okay? That's not going to be affordable, just like the thirty-nine foot houses they put on Elkenburg. Those are not affordable. Those are going for eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. The whole key is, when they resubmit this thing, is to really look at what they're going to do as far as affordability goes. Because they never presented any, any information in their packet about the size of their, of their houses, of their duplexes. I said many times in my emails I've sent to you and the Planning Commission, whenever, why don't they send us, why don't they show drawings? Overton had drawings of all their, their townhomes. They had drawings of their apartment buildings. But I, I don't trust this builder. I don't care, and this developer, because of a lot of the things he's already done, you know, he said three or four times, he's going to build houses that maintain the character of Trailside. Well, he didn't do that. He said that when he submitted his letter to, to Brad, he's going to build those four houses on Elkenburg. He didn't. And he said the same thing when he, when he applied for Trailside, okay? We've got to keep on track of these guys. I'm glad that the Planning Commission finally said that, hey, this, this proposal was bad. I mean, it was not complete. It did not have common elements. It didn't have the master deed in it. It didn't say, say how much open space. The open space was really confusing. There was a lot of items in there. And I figured, okay, the Planning Commission's going to say, we're going to have fifteen different contingencies. We're going to pass this thing. But I'm glad that staff came up right at the beginning of the meeting and said, this thing is incomplete. We recommend that they defeat it. And they did. It was unanimous. I hope when they resubmit it again, that they look at this very closely, because we're having problems with our zoning. And, you know, if they put a thirty-five foot house across from me, that'd be, that's bad enough as it is. But if they put it across from where all the, the ranches, the ranch homes are on Indiana there, nineteen-fifty ranches, you're going to build a thirty-five foot house? Can you imagine what that's going to look like? It's ridiculous. Okay? And we got to, we got to be very serious about this planning. And like we're talking about before, STRs, we, we just had a problem last couple of weekends ago, July fourth weekend. People next door, I have four STRs around me. I'm lucky because I got four of them, okay? There's no, there's no limit in the STR in, in our Trailside. So these people are making noise two nights in a row. So what I do, I called, I called Shores. What does Shores do? The lady answers the phone and says, I'll talk to my boss. Never got back to me. I called again on Sunday. Finally, nothing happened. So I, I called the owner. I emailed the owner next door, and she finally got ahold of the manager for Shores, and they talked to him. And they did, actually, the next two nights, there was no party until three o'clock in the morning. But if I had problems, and this is, this is the third fireworks night, okay? If I had problems, I was going to tell the police for too much noise. Do you think the police would come out there? And they'd get enough trouble with fireworks, okay? So the implementation of the ordinance is still bad, like a lot of the other ordinances. We've got to do something about that. I did, I did send a letter to Kelly for the STR admin, and she did get back to me three or four days later, but there's nothing she could do about it. She did check on it, see if I had called the police, but it wasn't going to do any good. Like I said, July third, they're not going to come out. They're getting too many things going on. So I'd like to really be serious about STRs. We do need to talk about the PUDs. We need to get the numbers down. We are not against STRs, but there's just too many of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to, any follow-up on that?
I do. I, I would just like to, to comment. I, I think we hear regularly concerns about if we call the police about a short-term rental, or we call the police about a noise issue, or we call the police about a nuisance, that they may not show up. We're very fortunate in South Haven to have the responsive police department. We do. I, I would really encourage folks that if, if you are experiencing a situation where you feel like you need to call the police department, please do so. There's a non-emergency number at, for Van Buren County Central Dispatch. It's very appropriate to call that non-emergency number for situations like that and have an officer dispatched. If they are working on another situation, sure, it may take a little bit longer, but you, you will get a response. They will follow up. It is a very appropriate way to, to respond to some of these. And it, and it helps us in our documentation of these situations. If follow-ups only being gone to private property owners or to these management companies, city staff and our, and our management systems aren't necessarily going to know. And then when we get concerns about not having accurate data when it comes to enforcement, that, that this is one way we can start to remedy that, is by going through these channels. So I just encourage people, if there are concerns, please consider calling the, the police if it's an appropriate situation.
Well stated. Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Josie Dillon. I live at 546 North Shore Drive. And really, just as importantly, I have an old building with my partner at 507 Phoenix Street downtown. And, you know, I've been thinking in terms of the short-term rental conversations. I think it's great if you have workshops, and I'd love to be included. I've had a, a store in the downtown for thirty-three years, so I'm a real old-timer, I guess you could say. And I think it's really important to consider what I consider another neighborhood, which is the downtown business district of South Haven. That's very much affected by, of course, the housing that's surrounding it. And we, you know, we serve tourists. We serve long-term residents, full-time residents, second homeowners. It's important to have a vibrant downtown, quite frankly. It's, it's, it's a strong draw for everyone, and it should be there. And, you know, I'm kind of concerned about, you have to think about the repercussions and how the rentals affect the downtown area. I think people tend to make assumptions about businesses, thinking because these businesses are in their town, that they know how it all runs, and they don't. Do not assume that short-term rentals are good or bad for downtown businesses. Ask the business owners. We're, I'd say by and large, we're a pretty happy group because we're doing what we want to do. So we're not complainers. But, you know, I'm a business. My partner and I have been there, like I said, for over thirty years. And we're open seven days a week, year-round. Now, I'm not saying every business should do that. A sole proprietorship is tiring. People need to take a month or two off in the winter. That's reasonable. There's certainly a slower time of year. But to, to have this be only a tourist town doesn't make sense, because then you have tourist businesses. And those businesses have a right to be there, but they close for six months plus a year. Now you have a dark downtown. Okay? We can't even put up holiday lights anymore. So we want neighbors too. And I think it's important to think about the impact on your city. I don't know, you know, so many people really don't come and shop locally. Many do. We want to be there for everyone. And I just really encourage you to take that into consideration. I don't know what the answer is, and, and, you know, what will come in the future. But it's very, very important to consider that downtown as a neighborhood, because it is one. I'm there half the time. I spend a lot of time there. And I'd, I'd be happy to, you know, attend a workshop and tell you what's going on down in that neighborhood. So thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anybody else? Good evening.
Hi. My name is Carrie Weber. I am a short-term rental owner. And I hesitated for a long time to talk to you guys, because quite honestly, it's pretty negative towards owners in this town. But I own a house at 606 Maple Street. In full disclosure, I am also remodeling a large home in another neighborhood. And I've already seen all the comments about how terrible of a person I am, because I have a large home. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and about my homes. Both of my homes were non-livable before we purchased them. Neither one of them had bathrooms, kitchens, plumbing, heating. We have taken these houses, and we have, we, we love working on houses. So we have redone the first one, and our neighbors told us how great it is and how much they love it. I've heard that we're just rich investors, that we don't want to be involved. That is not true at all. Me and my husband are very hard workers. We put ourselves through school. We did that, working two, three jobs, working in the military. We do this because, quite honestly, my husband was diagnosed with cancer. And my mother and my father had both died of cancer. My mother died, and I was on my own since before high school graduation. And I know that it's important to think of other sources of income. So that's why my family does this, also because of my children that are here. I want to be able to pass this down. We love South Haven. We've been coming here for over twenty-three years. We're very involved in the community. My husband is involved in three local organizations and has been for years. We talk to all of our renters. We get IDs, signed rental agreements. We go over water safety, local businesses, and things for the community. We are here year-round. We are probably in the community at least about three days a week, if not more, sometimes five days a week. And we visit with our local neighbors. We have put thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars and put ourselves into that, including this current house, to be able to give back to this community and to make these places nice. And I know I've heard all about how much money we make. We have put way more into these houses than we've ever made, and we probably will continue to do that. We have set up, I personally, with some of their owners, set up a community foundation fund, where we just gave our first donation to the Boys and Girls Club in the school, because we think that's important. We have given to the backpack program for years. We've paid because the city couldn't replace all of our sidewalks in front of our houses. And we know the locals walk there, and we paid out of our own pockets to do that. We have helped with renovating neighbors' homes and taking care of some of their maintenance free of charge, just because they're our neighbors and we think they're important. We have volunteered. I recently volunteered with other owners at Harbor Fest. I pick up trash when I go to the beach with my kids, even if they're like, come on, Mom, let's go. I put lights on my house every year. I've donated to the prom. I donated to the local athletes that were going across state to do some competitions. And, you know, it just, it depresses me, because I'm told over and over again that I'm not important, that I'm not a part of this community, just because my job's not here and I can't work here full-time right now. And honestly, it's adult bullying. I've seen the letters. I've heard the messages. I've seen the text messages. I've seen so many emails and things that this group, I don't have a problem with the survey. What I have a problem with is that information is being given out that's biased and not the true story. And I feel that if the residents knew the whole story and got to know people like myself, then they might have a little bit different views. So what I'm just asking is that you think about what you're doing and that you're listening to everybody in the community. I've had local business owners tell me, I totally know that your short-term rental people are helping me keep my business alive all year round, but I can't speak up because they will boycott my business. And that my local cleaner, who I consider a friend, and try to help her family all year round, she won't speak up because she is criticized by people that don't know the whole story. I've had friends that moved here for a second home, and they go to church here because they want to be involved, and they've been told negative comments. So please, let's discuss this. I know you say that you don't want to do economic surveys, but I think it's really important to see the true impact we have. And if you want the residents really to make an informed decision, give them all the information.
Sounds good. Thank you for your comments, for willing to come up and put a face. And I'll just say, good job to your kids as well for hanging out for two-plus hours. We're going to take a break in a minute, and then you can, yeah. Good job, kids. That was for you. Good job. We'll have a couple more, then we'll take a break, then you guys can get home and eat dinner.
An apologies, I left my reading glasses at home. Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I'm going to start out and thank Griffin for sharing the memorandum from EnviroLogic's to Eagle. The very first sentence says, "The site assessment is intended to focus on planning for construction activities to help the developer achieve due care compliance." The subject line is, "Overton Site, South Haven, Michigan, Budget Estimate for Brownfield Assessment." And with regard to tools, Mayor Smith, I met with you. I had mentioned last June or July, maybe May, about the land bank authority. And your response to me was, well, they didn't apply. And my response to that was, they don't. You seek them out. And that's exactly what Zach is talking about. So it's very unfortunate that he wasn't more involved at that time. With regard to Overton, we have our 2018 Housing Market Analysis. It shows more than fifty percent of the long-term rental is subsidized housing. Analyses that we need call for workhouse, workforce housing. Overton is identified as work- Overton is identified as workforce housing. However, I sent information to Griffin that is from MSU Extension. They came up with common terminologies for housing. Unfortunately, it does not appear that the city of South Haven has engaged that because of terminology that is continued to be used with regard to Overton, but is inconsistent with the terms from MSU Extension. Workforce housing, according to MSU Extension, should be most often indicates a program targeted at households that earn too much to qualify for traditional affordable housing subsidies. Attainable housing, under MSU's proposed definition, is based on the Urban Land Institute that defines attainable housing as non-subsidized-for-sale housing that is affordable to households with incomes between 80 and 120% of the area median income. And this is distinct from affordable housing, but very related. Overton, because it is based on 9% Lytec housing, is really subsidized housing. It has caps, it has other requirements. It's really similar to other developments in the area and that has not been transparently presented to our community. We've heard how Habitat's application was rejected. The city softballs it, saying it's a technicality. Habitat failed to complete a very basic standard housing analysis by the deadline. That's not a technicality. That's a requirement. And saying it's a simple technicality minimizes its impact. The city is now paying our consultant with our money to negotiate with Eagle to find a grant for Habitat, according to the memo. It's time city staff start being more responsive to the constituents and stop bending over to help with everything that the developer was supposed to do. In fact, it's quite clear from the contract that the city council, in an open meeting, not city staff, should be determining whether this should continue past the August 31st, 2022 deadline. There should be a determination on the record by facts, whether there's been reasonably sufficient progress. And because this is with regard to sale of public land, it really should be the city council based on the city charter. In light of the circumstances, reasonably sufficient progress should not be found. Habitat missed a deadline. Habitat has even had consultants and missed the deadline. Habitat is getting city staff and now Senator Nesbit's staff involved to try and make sure that they know what is needed. Habitat was so well-versed that that's why they were selected. However, on the eve of the approval, we find out that they need a third party for the town homes, which is the kind of homes that we really need and which is consistent with our master plan. Why did Habitat say that their development with 9% Lytec was similar to the development of the other two that were 4%? We heard from Ryan Kilpatrick in May of this year that they're significantly different. Why did he not bring now this deficiency or this difference back at the time when it was selected? There's just not the right things, the right things are not happening in this situation. The city is not answering the hard questions. They misconstrue our questions to answer the questions they want to. We really deserve to have our questions answered with facts in an open forum and not limited to five minutes.
Thanks for your comments.
David Beanstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And first of all, I would like to thank Kelly for her comments. And even though most of my comments will be made with my back to you, I wholeheartedly thank you and your family and welcome you to this community. And I'm so glad that you're a part of it and I regard you as good neighbors. I wanted to relate one incident that happened to us. We have, neighborhoods need neighbors sign in our yard. And we had a contractor single out our house. He had a dead battery. His car wouldn't start. And he came to our house because we had one of those signs. And he said, "I figured you'd be good people to ask." So anyone who is uncivil in any way, shape, or form, I disassociate myself completely with any person like that. That has no place in being neighborly. So having said that, I do support reform of the ordinance, or excuse me, of the ordinance. And I would like to thank my council member, Joe Reiser, for presenting the ideas that he did. Because, Joe, you have reflected my views. And not only that, but you've reflected the views of many, many of the residents that I have spoken with. So I would like the ideas that Joe was talking about and the ideas that Walt presented, seriously considered by the council. And I hope that the council adopts an ordinance that incorporates substantially those ideas. And if that doesn't happen, I will be right with Walt, circulating those petitions to get something on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone behind me. Some I do call neighbors. I am not a voting resident here in town, but I do own property, also 606 Maple. I just want to make a really quick few points.
Could you state your name and address?
Sure. Mark Weber, 606 Maple Street.
Good evening.
I just want to put a face on short-term renters because I feel there has been a change of vibe in the town recently since the NNN group has launched their, what I consider a very crafty campaign, a play on words. And it appears that it's emotion-based and not fact-based. So let me just ask this, you know, in the open. If I have an agenda and if I create the survey and I conduct the survey and if I bring in the results, does that seem legitimate? It does not seem a legitimate first blush. So I just want to say that. So I think there's a misrepresentation of short-term owners. My next bullet point is giving up rights. As a landowner, property owner, this is America, last time I checked. And what they want to do is take away a right from you that you have currently right now. It may seem, hey, it's all great because the existing owners, nothing's going to go away. That's a carrot waving, you know, to try to get the agenda passed. So just be wary, anybody watching, because it's a slippery slope. Third point is you stand up for your rights. And you see our family behind me. I want them to see their mom and dad, the work that we put in, the time that we spend in the community, and that we're not going to go down sitting down. They've got a great campaign and I commend the work that they've done. But I do want to make it very clear, it is emotion-based, not fact-based. So I want my family to observe their mom and dad fighting for what we consider our rights are being violated. So I do support a working group and I do hope that short-term owners are included in that group to hopefully find an amicable solution. Affordable housing. Don, who's in my Southwest Steel headers group, complains about PUDs. And PUD, I believe, is Planned Ermine Development. So you have a developer that buys a large plot of land and it's there, they get zoning passed and they have a master plan of how they want to separate that land and develop it. And if they want short-term renter properties out there and they put that in their master plan, it's their right to do that as a developer, as a South Haven or Michigan native, as an American. And to move into a community that has been in the rental business since the 1880s and complain of short-term renters is very contradictory. That's like moving to an airport nearby and complaining about airplane noise for an airport that's been there for ages. So the affordable housing, let me give you an example. I alluded to the fact that South Haven's a tourist community and has been. Don't take my word on it. Go walk the North Shore. There's a sign that explains how the cottages were formed in the 18, late 1800s. I've remodeled a few homes, ours including 606 Maple. I'll keep it short. And when we open up the walls, there's zero insulation because these homes were originally seasonal cottages that have been morphed into, you know, full-time residences. So I just leave you with that and hopefully we can work on a steering committee together. I welcome, thank you for your time.
Thank you again. And good job to your kids again.
Kurt Haller, 103 Michigan Avenue. I'd just like to respond. I support everything that Mr. Reiser spoke about. I think we need to realize there's not an equivalency of stakeholders in this situation as Mr. Sleeper alluded to in the last gentleman. I have owned property here for 27 years. The first 15 years, I was not a resident, did not consider myself to have a stake in the decisions the council made. I had rental houses. I remodeled them. That was my own business. No one forced me to do it. No one forced this young gentleman to do it. Your responsibility is to voting permanent residents who have an eligibility to vote. That's who elects a council and that's the council's main responsibility to deal with. And STRs are not a constitutional right either. There's zoning for any different thing. STRs are a zoning issue as well. So to act as if when you buy your property, you have the right to do everything with it is not true. And I own plenty of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. One more. Almost.
Brandy Clom, 627 Superior Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I just wanted to say that I support everything I've heard tonight. And there's been a lot of emotion in the room, but that doesn't mean we're as far apart as that emotion may make it seem. I think that our community is much more closer on the subject of STRs than we all realize. I live in Wendy and Mr. Arnold, sorry, forever, Mr. Arnold's Ward Two. And I voted for Wendy based on Wendy's ability to speak on STRs. Because there are a lot of stakeholders and it does become emotionally charged, one can feel hesitant to speak out on it. Whichever way you're speaking out on it, you can have people come out of the woodwork and say completely false things about you and attack your character or the good work you do. As it was talked about at the last council meeting, things were said against the wonderful Children's Museum Wendy works so hard to bring here, based on their fear that their financial gain could be restricted by any change to the status quo. I told myself that I want it to become more involved in my local community and I've been making an effort to do that. I've not only been attending these meetings and I appreciate everyone else who has either been attending regularly or like the Webers, bringing up their whole family. I think that's great and please keep coming back and keep participating because that's what matters. The things you see on social media might not be true and some of them are very toxic. And I work in digital marketing, so those things that get you all fired up, there's an algorithm for that. Those big companies are doing that on purpose. And instead of jumping into the comment war or thinking someone in the town's out to get you and harm your family, come to these meetings, speak with these people face-to-face and get to know them because they are your neighbors, whether you're here year-round, part-time, if you're working in the community. We all love South Haven. So I really encourage you, if you're feeling triggered and you're feeling really emotional about it, reach out to Walt. Reach out to Ryan Servetus. I'm going to drop his name. I normally wouldn't do that, but he's out, he's a public figure in the community. And he's good at getting people excited on Facebook. He's on Facebook, it's what he does. And he can get people worked up. He got me worked up about something. So I reached out to him and I said, "Let's get coffee." And we did. And we had a great conversation. I've met with Walt, had a great conversation. I support what Walt has said and I support neighborhoods need neighbors. I'm proud to have that sign in my yard because if someone needs help, I want them to be up on that door knocking and I will help them. And I tell the people that I encounter that they can come to me and we're trying really hard to make a good neighborhood here. And those like the Webers who are doing what they do, that is appreciated. Folks treating our town like a commodity from afar and not putting in that work, that's where things start to come out of balance and we all feel these pain points. So if you are happy today with what's going on, you should not be worried about the neighborhoods need neighbors, your current investment, your current permit. They don't have any desire to take that away from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, how about a recess?
I make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion, second. Take a five-minute recess. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Five minutes.
Okay.[1584.63]
That there were some concerns that an ordinance that was adopted back in 2015 hadn't been appropriately transcribed into the city's official zoning ordinance book compilation. After that was brought to our attention, city staff with the assistance of this city attorney have been reviewing that claim and found that, in fact, that claim was correct and that there was some ordinance language that was adopted back in 2015 through a substandard process that was not appropriately transcribed into the code of ordinance book. So for seven years since then, both members of the public, builders and city staff have been operating under wrong zoning ordinance language. This has led to approximately nine homes in the city of South Haven being constructed at a, being constructed at a less restrictive way than they should have been based on what was appropriately adopted in 2015. So based on that discovery, the city attorney helped city staff to prepare a number of potential recommendations to city council. Nick, do you want to go ahead and discuss a few options for city council to discover or discuss?
Sure. So just picking up where Griffin left off just a little bit, the research that staff did in looking at this claim confirmed that the online compilation is different with respect to the building height restrictions than what was adopted by the council in 2015. The consequence of that is that the 2015 ordinance that was adopted by council is what governs, what would apply going forward unless something is done by the council in terms of adopting a new ordinance or modifying that ordinance. Any new building permit application that comes in, as well as any existing permit application, will be reviewed under that standard, which imposes a two-story height limitation in the R1 districts and a three-story height limitation in the CBD district. And that's in addition to the numerical feet regulations that apply in those districts, which I believe is 35 feet in the R1. And I'm not certain, in the CBD, it has its own height limitation. So going forward until modified, staff will be applying those limits, will update the code book to reflect the 2015 amendment. We've also presented to council a couple of options to consider if council wants to modify the ordinances. One option would be kind of a limiting grandfathering of the houses that were built between 2015 and the present day with the assumption that there was no story requirement in the R1 district. We believe there's approximately nine of those homes. The council could adopt a very simple ordinance to the effect that those ordinance are basically treated the same as any house constructed prior to 2015, that being they'd be lawfully non-conforming, they could continue to exist, and there wouldn't be any type of claim from neighboring owners or things like that against the property owners. If council's interested in kind of a more comprehensive look at height, one option, and this is something that the building department was going to support in conjunction with the zoning ordinance rewrite, would be to, as the motion that was made by council, just stop regulating stories separately from height. The zoning administrative position is that the two ordinances are kind of duplicative of each other. A numerical height limitation standing alone is, we believe, the more common practice in Michigan municipalities. We have Williams &amp; Works on contract and could certainly consult with them as to best practices as to height. But, you know, an option to resolve this would be to kind of jump the height issue ahead of the general zoning rewrite, work with Williams &amp; Works on a standalone ordinance to address height at this time in response to this issue. There are other options council could consider. Those were the ones that staff, had staff support. So the motion was made for that third option I described, that would be to kind of send to planning commission a more comprehensive, ask planning commission to take a more comprehensive look at height regulation and in particular, the possibility of eliminating regulation of stories and focusing only on numerical height in all the districts that currently have story regulations.
And to wrap all of this up, and then we'll do the best we can to answer any questions if there are any, really would just like to thank the resident and all residents who bring to our attention concerns or questions like this. It is an appropriate process to bring these concerns to us, allow city staff to look into them, to determine if they do have merit, as they did in this case, or if they don't have merit. And then when situations like this arise, we can then bring them back to city council. They can be shared with the public and we can work towards a solution. I do want to add in addition to this, though, city staff is confident that a situation like this would not occur again. When this happened in 2015, the packet of ordinances that were adopted, for whatever reason at that time, were adopted using a, really a substandard process. They were brought both to the planning commission and then eventually considered by city council in about a 70-page packet that really just had a number of markings and words filled in and words crossed out and certain things italicized. That was so, it was really so unlike how we do ordinances at this time where we bring a clean, fresh copy before both boards with a red line version that shows the changes. So to the best of our knowledge, based on, you know, what happened in 2015, as far as we can determine is what happened is that substandard ordinance was adopted appropriately. But then as staff was going back through and going through this packet of changes and comparing it to the compiled version, must have missed something going through. So we are going to be going back through that process. Megan, the city clerk's actually going to go, be going back through that process to review any other amendments adopted with those actions in 2015, just to double and triple check that everything else was incorporated appropriately. But in this situation, you know, we can say with a level of confidence, we don't think something like this would repeat itself. It was kind of an odd situation in 2015 that would have caused this originally.
Could you share what the process would look like if we send this through, just as far as the planning commission, the public process?
Sure. So with the motion that would be proposed, city staff would bring that language to the planning commission at its next meeting and give the planning commission the opportunity to discuss the height regulations. They would then work through their normal review process, look at probably draft language from city staff, make edits, give feedback. And when it got to a point where they were comfortable scheduling a public hearing and eventually considering it, there would be a formal public hearing. At any other meetings, there's opportunity for public comment, like there is this evening or any other public meeting. And once a proposed ordinance got to the point where the planning commission was comfortable making a recommendation, it would then get sent to city council where, after two readings, city council could consider it for formal adoption. So, you know, we're looking at a couple-meeting process at a minimum. But, you know, if the direction is to try to get something in place here prior to, excuse me, prior to going through the more comprehensive zoning ordinance update, that's something we're definitely willing to do.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other council questions or comments at this time? If not, we'll see if there's any.
Just to make sure I have it straight, that's what I hear you're saying is that in 2015, the city staff at the time brought forth something to the council, and that's not how we do it. But they did it. Currently, we have better practices in place, so this won't happen again.
Correct. Yeah, the format by which the ordinance was brought to both the planning commission and city council at that time is very different than how we do it now.
It's not our best practice.
Correct.
Our current best practices.
Based on our review, it really wasn't our practice at that time either, where I haven't been with the city two years yet. I really can't speak to why or how that could have happened. But, you know, after something like that's incorporated, we've had a lot of new staff over the last several years who reasonably have to work off of the compiled ordinance that is the same thing that's posted on the website, the same thing that the general public uses. And again, it's why I am appreciative of when someone from the public is able to dive back through some of these things and they unearth, you know, mistakes that happen when you're 150-plus-year-old organization. It's always helpful and we're going to do the best we can to move forward. Nick, do you mind talking a little bit more about what our current practice is as someone who drafts a lot of our ordinance language and what it looks like in terms of formatting when it's brought to our different boards?
Yeah. So anything, any ordinance that comes through me, and most of them do, I'll provide a, what's called a clean copy, which is just a PDF document that doesn't have any markings on it other than just the text of the proposed ordinance. That's what gets codified. It's basically a copy and paste into the compilation from there. I also try to provide, when it makes sense, a red line copy, which used by pasting the existing ordinance into Microsoft Word and then taking the draft text and then running an automatic comparison of the two. That's just to help council see what's changing. That doesn't have the force of law under our current process. Sometimes there's, it's very possible there could be errors in there, things that aren't missed. I try not to do that. Sometimes we're changing so much that a red line just makes your brain hurt and don't even put it in the packet. But we never have Megan go through the red line and try to, you know, handpick what's changed and put into the ordinance. She just takes the clean copy and puts it in verbatim. But what was presented to council in 2015, you had to go through and do those, and it was a 70-page document, and you had to go through and do each change individually. It's just a process that invites mistakes that our current process does not. And I actually was with the city in 2015. That's not how we did things then. I don't know why this was done that way. But that's, that was the consequence. I think probably because it was such a big amendment that they thought the red line was necessary to explain all the changes, but the clean copy should have been prepared to, but it wasn't.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I would like to know how many homes have been approved with the inappropriately transcribed ordinance, since I brought this to your attention a month or two ago and requested a moratorium. And I would like to know why I had to file a FOIA request to get information. I thought that was a bit, a bit much to request of a citizen. And for appreciation, I would request that you consider me being on the committee doing the refresh for the ordinances. I think I've shown that I find time and time again, errors that have been missed. I found that error because I was trying to appreciate how the sizes of the homes in this community have been changing for the bigger when family sizes are getting smaller. And as we've said, we need price point homes that our working class can afford because the homes being built are not. And parallel with that, I have been looking at ordinances as they've been going through. And I'm the one that caught the omission of a critical not in the fireplace ordinance last year, such that the way it was presented to the planning commission twice was that it would be dangerous as opposed to not be dangerous. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Do I have to answer the one question on approvals?
Sure. There's been, there's been one home that is pending since this was brought to our attention that would have been impacted by this, that the permit has not been issued. It's been under review while this is being addressed.
So there's been no issued ones?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let's shoot.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. I would just like to second Mary's self-nomination. I think she would be excellent for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Council discussion before we vote this up?
I just, I don't think I could verbalize my concern properly, but I just feel like I would want to give some thought before we do away with the height or the story requirement. I think part of my concern is just that people without that height requirement, or sorry, with only the height requirement and not the story requirement, will just keep building to that limit. Whereas if we had the two-story limit, that's going to kind of incentivize them to at least sometimes build smaller and more in character with a lot of our neighborhoods. So that's my issue with what we're talking about.
Isn't this just a stopgap measure until we do the recodification and we look at all of this and the zoning, then we come up with, and I'm assuming within the next few months, we'll come up with the new height requirement, the new requirement on lot coverage, which is a hot issue right now, all these different issues. But that's going to, that's going to come down the road. But we got to fix something temporarily right now.
This is, this will take, this is going to address the height issue right now. This is giving it to planning and saying, "Go after height." The others will come separately, the density or lot coverage, that would be separate. But this is saying, at this point in time, the recommendation is look at best practice. What's the easiest, most consistent thing to enforce? Is it height alone, height plus stories? Current recommendation is height alone, not stories.
But I wouldn't think that we would change it again.
No.
With the recodification process.
It always could be revisited, but staff's intention, if this motion were to pass, would be to go ahead and work with Williams &amp; Works on this amendment. They're already under contract, basically to jump this issue ahead of the overall rewrite and get their recommendation as to best practices and go ahead and bring that to the planning commission now. Could always change it later, but I think it would be, it would be what they would recommend. What we were bringing to you would be what they would recommend if we were waiting. They're just going to jump it ahead and do it now.
Good. Sounds good. All right. We've got a motion. We've got a second. If there are no further questions, why don't you just roll call this one?
Reeser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Onuki?
No.
Smith?
Yes. It passes, so off it goes. Next. Natalie, you still here? Good evening. We're going to get an update at 10 o'clock at night from our police chief. Natalie Thompson, thank you for being here at 10 o'clock at night.
Thank you. And I will make this brief. I wanted to start by providing an update to our holiday weekend. That went very well. Get my stats here. So for the holiday weekend, our department our department had 20 arrests. We issued 28 citations. We took a total of 35 complaints. The foot patrol hours were a little bit higher. The officers recorded 44, but pretty much everybody was on foot except for a few officers. So that number I know was higher. And then also on that weekend, the night officers do property checks, just because we have such an influx of out-of-the-area people. So they did 17 property checks on Friday and Saturday night. And just to break down for some of the arrests, generally, the goal of my operational plan is to, we want everyone to stay available in case a significant life safety event happens. So having that in mind, you know, some of the arrests that we had were unavoidable or they'd involve safety issues. So we had 15 misdemeanor arrests, and these were on July 3. We had OWI, which is drunk driving and assault. We had several retail frauds Sunday morning. So I'm thinking maybe people figured we're all in the festival area, but Sunday morning, we had like a bunch of retail frauds right in the row, which I thought was interesting. Disturbing the peace, trespassing, open and toxic, of course. And then we also had five felony arrests that included resisting and obstructing, which means we arrest people and they fight with us, possession of heroin, possession of methamphetamine, and an individual, actually from out of state, that had a felony fugitive warrant. So we got him into custody and extradited back to his state. In addition, we had obviously several outside agencies helping us, and a state police unit was able to get two individuals, not in our festival area, but within our city, with CCW, a handgun, unregistered handgun that was loaded, and some drugs. So that was, those were good people to get off the street. Our marine patrol also made two OWI arrests on the water. So those are some of the highlights of the arrests. And I also wanted to just read, I'm not sure if everyone appreciates or understands the magnitude of all the help and assistance that we get for that day. We start planning six months ahead of time. It's very detailed, and like I said, the goal is to keep this community safe, top priority. And I do take it personal. So many agencies help support our police department's operational plan, of course, Shea's, Van Buren County Sheriff's Department, Uniform, Marine, Reserve, Dispatch, and Corrections Divisions, Allegan County's Marine Uniform and Reserve Divisions, Michigan State Police Troopers, Michigan State Police Tactical Bicycle Team, Michigan State Police Hometown Security Team, Michigan State Police District Crime Prevention Squad, the Bokeegon Tribal Police, Covert Township Police, and Fire Department, and also the Red Cross helped us out at both beaches. The United States Coast Guard also did help us with some of the marine traffic. And also, in particular to city departments, the whole city worked hard, but I think they don't get enough recognition. But our DPW staff are really to be commended for the hours of work that they spent pretty much the whole weekend with all the fencing. And I don't know how many footage of fencing, but they pretty much used all that the city has for the north and south beach, all the no parking signs, roping up our safety zones for the pier. And then I needed extra spaces for patrol cars here and there. I mean, they literally, they did a lot. They delivered cones and barricades to all 13 of the different traffic control points, like 15 to 20 barricades, 10 to 50 cones. I mean, they, it takes them like four days to get everything set up. So they probably worked harder than we did, I would say. The city's beach parking attendants were a really great asset this year, particularly in the areas that we need to keep clear for emergency vehicles on Erie Street. So I can tell you, the police department, we wrote, unfortunately, only five parking tickets that day, but I think our beach parking attendants wrote like 65. So they really, they really helped us out with that. Our information center also at the police and fire complex, they were double-staffed all day long, and just the influx of calls that they get constantly is amazing. So they did a really good job. As always, we were supposed to have a debrief session last week, but that got canceled over something else we had to handle. But we do have a debrief session that we will be having, and generally, that's with all the agencies a representative, because I always like to critique and make improvements for the upcoming year. So this plan, we've had in place since 2017, and we make improvements. You know, I welcome critiques or criticism. So, but yes, everything. So it's my 30th fireworks here in South Haven, and I would say it was probably one of the smoothest. So we're very happy.
Heard nothing but compliments on traffic flow, safety, all of it. So I'm glad you got the bad people off the street. They made the bad choice to come to our fireworks show, so thanks for getting rid of them.
Chief Thompson, when Mr. Nello was here earlier, he commented about not wanting to burden the police with the addition. Would you like to speak to that? Griffin handled it very well, but I-
And I wish he was still here, because actually, I've spoken to him before, actually at these meetings, about that issue. And I understand that, you know, STR violations sometime, if it's not noise or a party, you know, and the very least, if you call the police department, we will do a report, even if it's on occupancy. You know, we can't barge in, but we really do, if you call us. Now, I will tell you, on July 3, it may have been delayed, because like I said, our priority on that day was staying available in case something really bad happened. But short of July 3 every year, if you call us, we will at least have an incident report. And I do know that shortly after Griffin started with the city, and this was in the winter, which is surprising, but we had a couple reports, and he received a complaint, I think from a neighbor, and our police report that was just documentation coupled with other information that he had, and he was able to actually cite the owner of the rental property. So, you know, people get frustrated because they're like, well, you're not writing them tickets. Well, sometimes, you know, we can't write the specific ticket, but just the documentation that we have, and then we have a pretty good flow. The officers will either email me or get it directly to Griffin's team, and at least it's documentation. And I can tell you that it can help with enforcement or just at least documenting, okay, this is like the second wild party for a weekend. So, but yes, if you call us, we will respond.
And even if you call the non-emergency number, there's a record that someone called about such and such a house, and that's data that we get.
Get 24/7, yes.
Great.
Thanks. Thanks again, Chief. Well done. Thanks to all of our officers and people that helped out that day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go. Citizens in the audience, we've heard items not on the agenda. If anybody has anything that we have not already talked about, you will have up to five minutes to come on up, state your name and address, and-
Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. I stayed tonight because I felt this issue needed to at least get, has some immediacy to it. And it was a tragic situation, and it has to do with the drowning, the drownings that took place last week. My recommendation that something that we can do immediately tomorrow is that if there is a red flag by the pier and the waves are hitting sideways, there is probably a riptide along that beach, and that entire beach should have red flags put up. I say that not to point blame, because I don't even know, is it wave height that people are looking at in terms of flag designation, or is it potential for riptides? I'm not sure how that works. But as someone who's been in the swimming and lifeguard and teaching swimming my whole life, I know that the beaches should have a consistency in the color of the flags on days where there are red flags. And I'm not saying that would have made a difference, but I'm saying that there were definitely riptides in that area, and it probably all should have been designated a red flag area. So that's all I have to say. And I'm really sorry to the families who had to endure this awful, awful thing. So thank you.
Agreed. Thank you for your comments.
Walt Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard. Last week, I sent an email to Mr. Mayor and council and Kate concerning lot coverage. I started thinking about this, looking at the houses on Erie Street, 104, 300, and the other one, and they just all look too big for the lot. So I started looking, and anybody with a high school geometry, sophomore geometry, isn't it when they teach geometry? I came upon a letter that Kate had written to Lisa Croupier about how she was calculating the lot coverage. And they're using the plat up to the curb. According to people on zoning and ZBA, that was changed years ago, and they're supposed to be measuring, calculating lot coverage using the inside of the sidewalk. So those houses that appear to be too large on Erie Street are in fact over 60% lot coverage. So what's going on? Somebody want to tell me what the correct way to calculate lot coverage is? Can somebody tell me? I've gotten no answer, so I'd really like an answer.
Sure. I can tell you that the city manager responded to you this afternoon in an email and-
Okay.
-put a response to you in writing in city council. So I can read it.
Would you?
Sure. "Walt, I apologize for the delay in this response. The city measures lot coverage based on the established lot lines and right-of-way lines as they appear on deeds, surveys, or other recorded documents. This is consistent with the various definitions in the zoning ordinance, such as the following. Lot area, the area of a horizontal plane contained within the lot lines and right-of-way lines of a parcel, not including any area within the public right-of-way or the 100-year flood plain as established by flood insurance rate map, proclengated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency as referenced within Section 1613. Right-of-way, a street, alley, or other thoroughfare or easement permanently established for passage of persons, vehicles, or the location of utilities. The right-of-way is delineated by legally established lines or boundaries. Accordingly, in a situation like 300 Erie, where the sidewalk appears to have been built in a manner that accroches onto private property, lot coverage is still measured based on the established lot lines as they appear in applicable documentation, i.e. a survey."
Well, it appears that ZBA and zoning don't agree with that. I'm just saying that according to zoning, lot coverage is calculated from the inside of the sidewalk because that is a public right-of-way. Okay? So it does not include the parkway or the sidewalk. It's calculated from the inside of the sidewalk. That was changed when the lot coverage was changed from 25% to 40%. Okay? They made the lots smaller by not including the parkways, so they increased the coverage to 40%. In essence, the houses would be about the same size. Setbacks are calculated, okay, setbacks are calculated from the curbs. Lot coverage is calculated from the inside of the sidewalk. Those houses are all over 60% lot coverage.
Thanks for comments. Anybody else? Come on up. Good late evening.
How about it? Good evening. My name is Anthony Corolo. I own a house at 242 Oak Street in South Haven here. It's my son Brian. He's my, I'm his puppet. I want to talk about an outdoor kitchen that was built in the house next door to us at 240 Oak Street. Griffin was in a meeting today about this issue. The city has decided to approve a permit after the fact, pretty much. The house, it's a rebuild of a, according to the owner, a rebuild of a outdoor kitchen that was damaged by a fallen tree that also damaged my house. But the rebuild was substantially bigger than what they had originally built. The rebuild is three feet from the property line, and it's seven feet from our house now. It was never that. And we have photos showing that effect. I know the city has taken that in consideration at this stage. The ordinance says it should be at least 25 feet for any single-family residence, and that's, I guess, the original kitchen was closer than that, and we have no problem with that. But seven feet away from our house where my grandchildren sleep is just unacceptable to us. Also, in addition to the ordinance, it says 10 feet from the sidelines of the property. Clearly, it's not that. Three feet is the estimate. But with that, I'll just turn over to my son, let him finish.
Yeah. Brian Corolo, as you mentioned, his son. I think kind of two points here are, I know the permit was granted after the fact on the basis of it was replacing an existing footprint, which is acceptable by the codes and regulations. Like my dad Tony emphasized, it clearly is beyond those existing conditions. I think something we also came across to is that the addition, the replacement of it as well is in excess of 60%, which I believe if it's a, to use proper terminology, a non-conforming use of a building, that if it's more than 60% damaged, it cannot be replaced unless it is conforming to the new codes, which would be the 25 feet from the building, the house, the bedroom, which is the concerning part, and then 10 feet at least from the lot line. I think, you know, the city allowing this to continue, we're hoping it could be revisited, and I know it's kind of being looked at. But I think the city allowing this, kind of a couple things, fire hazard, being that close, and it's been brought closer, health concern, obviously summers, windows open, kitchen items, grill, I think a smoking, cooking situation as well, concerns. And then third is, you know, valuation of property. If it continues, it's, you know, encroaching on a property, it's outside of current laws or zoning regulations. So that's a concern. I think our ask is that, you know, the city look at it, reconsider the issuing of the permit, to revoke the permit, and also remove the structure that is outside of what should be allowed. Yeah, we're happy to speak with anyone after. We have pictures. I know we've had a great conversation with Griffin earlier today, and if anyone else is interested or has any questions, we're happy to address those. We're just looking for this to be fair. You know, if it was the existing situation, it's within the requirements, not a problem, but it's being taken advantage of, it's far exceeding the expansion and closer to our place. So, thank you.
I appreciate it. Maybe you can send us information on that later, just get us up to date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mike Campbell, 216 Erie. This is another chapter of what you just heard. This chapter is called 354 Kalamazoo. 354 Kalamazoo is a home that was owned by friends of ours. In 2021, in March, they sold it to a couple, and the couple 12 days later obtained an STR permit. And just so you aren't concerned, this is not about STRs, it's about building permits and code enforcement. 12 days after they bought the house, the individuals acquired an STR permit. an STR permit. That was on the 26th of March in 2021, so it's 12 days later. As you know, from my last time that I spoke, last council meeting, I walk. And so I noticed a number of vehicles that related to contractors and so forth in and about the vicinity of that house doing work. Fast forward to 2022, the 29th of April, a year later, the short-term rental permit was renewed. And then about 14 days later, the property was resold. So the person buying the property from our friends resold it in a year and one month. That was on the 13th of May. And then on the 19th, they transferred it to an LLC. I was interested because in the listing for the house, again, we were curious because why was it being sold again? It says, entire home updated in 2021, new, master bathroom, electrical systems, furnace, hot water heater, fireplace, on and on and on. Obviously, it was enticing to the new owners because they paid 50% more than what it was sold for the year before, which in and of itself is a problem. However, I then got more curious and thought, well, I wonder if these people took building permits out to do this work? Because I know when I did my master bathroom and when I had to change my electrical systems, I needed to have building permits. I went onto the site, no building permits. To be sure, I asked Megan if she would look. Today, I got a response, no building permits. The last one issued was 2018. So we have a house that's been rewired to some extent, unless the realtor was lying in the listing. Let's assume they weren't. So we have the electrical systems updated, no inspection being done, yet the short-term permits were authorized and given. I suspect that an electrical inspection during construction is a lot different than what is done when Chase goes out and does an inspection of a house for short-term rental. First of all, the walls aren't open, so you can't inspect how the wiring was done. So now we have an STR that has wiring that has not been inspected. We don't know if it's been done right by a qualified electrician. I'm not so concerned about the plumbing. It's the electricity that's going to cause the fire in the STR. And are we going to have a disaster because we don't have building inspectors out there looking while they're checking all of the other construction that's going on, looking at, are there other places that have construction vehicles around them, and do they have a construction permit in their window? I know when I lived in a different community, the inspectors would come around, and if you had people working in your house and they saw it day after day, they would stop by and they'd say, what are you doing? Do you have a permit? I think our inspector should be taking note, not only of what they're assigned to look at, but also what's going on in the rest of the community. And I know our inspector has been associated and kind of a central figure in some of the other incidences, 77 Clinton, the short-term rentals on the 400 block of North Shore. Not sure if they've been involved with this one. But this is another example where the inspector should be doing their job and finding these situations where people are doing things undercover and not getting a permit in order to protect the safety of the people that are staying there, whether permanent residents or visitors in a short-term rental. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Maybe, Griffin, maybe it might be interesting sometime to have our building inspector just share the process and how they, I know they do stop by, but just, might be good for a future meeting to share their processes.
Sure. I can also note this evening that there's not one inspector. There's a building inspector. We contract out with electrical inspectors. There's mechanical inspectors, plumbing inspectors. So there's a variety of different folks who go around and issue different permits depending on their area of expertise, but happy to look into the concerns.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. First, a big shout out to Bill Hunter and his staff. I and other people along North Shore Drive had raised concerns about people not stopping for the crosswalks, and we have several public beaches. And he heard our concerns. He developed a process, and he identified where crosswalk signs were required, and we have them, and we are most thankful, and they are working. Cars are finally going slow. They are finally stopping for people. Now, yeah, so, thank you. I now have comments on everybody else's comments. So with regard to Walt's comments, I have to say I fully support him, and I am going on record that I just feel that the city is staff, is putting up barriers to, for citizens to bring issues before the proper body. So I had requested an interpretation of that exact ordinance. In fact, I quoted some of the things that Griffin had read off. I paid my $300 fee for the ZBA for an interpretation. I then received an email back saying that it was going to be $1,500 I was going to have to fork out if I wanted it to go to the ZBA, because I was going to have to pay for the attorney time. Now, Kate responded to Walt in an email in probably less than a week. So how can Kate respond to an email but tell me I have to provide $1,500 for the attorney to be available for ZBA? It has a chilling effect. It shows that staff is not accepting people's concerns. The length I had to go to to raise the story height should not be required by your citizens when your citizens are finding errors that staff is missing. The permit with the neighbor with the kitchen, this is reminiscent of 77 Clinton. Neighbors raised concerns. How was that responded to? The zoning administrator created a memo that rubber stamped all the missteps that happened before the second story started, and it was factually supported with inaccurate, incorrect facts, saying the second floor was going to be the same footprint as the main garage. That is wrong. That is dead wrong. The second floor is larger. It enters into and encroaches and makes the minimum three-foot setback smaller. And that's probably why you're in litigation, is because your stop-work order was so late, you dragged your feet so long that the train was out, and there was no way to turn it back, and now the citizens, the residents are forced to live with that in their neighborhood. It violated the variances that were granted. There was no zoning review before the building permit was granted. The city manager sat here and told you it was because of staff changes, but the people who signed off on that, she later said when I said, well, didn't, whose signature is this? Because it looks awfully similar to the signature for 77 Clinton. Well, golly gee, that person has been a contract worker for the city for 10 years, so I don't know how that was related to staff changes. And then the zoning court, the zoning person is a consultant with Williams and Works, and he's been here, I believe, since at least June 2019, but definitely since 2020. So I don't see how that was a staff change. And then building permits, just in general. We see all these houses. We see dumpsters. We see things going on. We raise concerns, and nothing really happens. And then we find out they're an STR, and then they get approved. But as, as Mike said, there was an inspection. There's probably electrical work, and now the city has granted an STR permit that says it's safe. It's passed the review, but you really don't know what's going on. And then last but not least, enforcement of zoning ordinances. You know, I've been a little concerned about the lengths that the staff has gone to, saying that, you know, the zoning ordinance does need to be reviewed, and it's been a bit tricky, and we've had to do a little more interpretation than it's, than we'd like. Staff is not supposed to be interpreting. Zoning administrator enforces. If there's an issue, it goes to the zoning board of appeals. And the citizens, if there's an issue, should not have to pay $1,500, $1,600 to get poorly-written ordinances properly enforced and interpreted. The city should gladly take these issues to the ZBA on their dime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay. City manager comments. Mr. Assistant City Manager, you're it for the night. You're up.
Thank you. Yes, I'm obviously not the city manager, but regardless, happy to be with you all this evening. I do have a few comments to share with the group. To start off, as a friendly reminder, we will be having the gubernatorial primary election on August 2nd. If there are any questions about that upcoming election, please feel free to contact the city clerk. Was really pleased to be at the ribbon-cutting for the new Sesko Centennial Trail. That was funded primarily by the local CVB. It's another great example of a new amenity that we have in town, and another great example of how collaboration can really make some special things happen in a town like South Haven. So congratulations to the CVB, the Chamber, and all the other groups who were part of making that happen. I think it's going to be another really exciting amenity in South Haven and a good representation of the history of our town. As a friendly reminder to City Council, we will be hosting the first diversity, equity, and inclusion workshop as part of the equity assessment that was approved earlier this year on August, I believe, August 15th, prior to the second city council meeting that month. Have some fun news about new hires here. You all met our new patrol officer, Tyler DeBacher, earlier today. Excited to have him joining our team. We also have a new public works clerk, Levi Skuka. He is replacing a longtime employee and will be working for our Department of Public Works. Excited to have him joining our team. As well as, we had a new part-time customer service worker, Miranda Crew, start today. Miranda transferred to customer service from parking enforcement. A great example of showing how some of these seasonal positions can be great entryways into other employment with the city of South Haven. But she did such a great job there. She was able to transfer over to the customer service department. And besides Miranda transferring out of parking enforcement, really excited to share that we have had zero turnover in our seasonal workers this year, which is unheard of. So give council a lot of credit for recognizing some needed changes when it came to how we went about paying and recruiting seasonal work. And want to give a big shout out to our human resources director, Kim Wise, because I know she's worked really hard on that. So that's exciting news. And lastly, tomorrow, July 19th, is the last day to submit online feedback for the city's visioning process. There is a link to that on the city's webpage. So if you have not yet and you would like to, please do that by tomorrow. With that, I have no more comments, and I'm happy to do what I can to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any questions for Griffin? Nothing. Council comments. Mr. Reeser.
Just a couple of things. I know we've been here a long time. I have to say this. The people who stood up that have short-term rentals that own them, I can only speak for myself, but I think I know many other people I've spoken to. We do not think less of you as people. We don't think of less of you as homeowners or landowners or making money in our town. That is fine. That's why we're not trying to harm you by taking away your license. The gentleman who said, this is my home, this is America, I can do with it what I want, that's also true in South Haven as well as America. But if it encroaches on another person's home, that's when laws are passed to protect each other. That's where we live in a civilized country and a civilized South Haven. My one recommendation is please judge all, each other by what we say and do and not what you see in social media. People hide behind fictitious names. They hide and they say things that they would never have the nerve to say to your face. So just be careful when we generalize about each other because some of it just isn't true. I am getting more and more disturbed and upset and concerned about residents coming up and being worried about not being treated fairly about zoning issues. I just find it hard to believe someone can have a kitchen or a fire pit within seven foot of someone else's home. There's got to be more to it. So I think we should jump on things like that right away. But I would like to make this, and I'm saying without knowledge. I don't want fees placed on residents to ask questions about zoning that be punitive in nature. They should be there to cover costs, but that's it. I think residents have every right to question what's happening in their neighborhood. They should be able to see blueprints. They should be able to go down and see anyone in City Hall and ask for information without being charged to do it. And the final last thing on short-term rentals, once and for all, we can talk about the economics. We can talk about all the issues. Here's what it really, really comes down to for the people in this community. What is the quality of life for you living here? How do you feel when you walk out the front door? I love to walk my dog and walk down the neighborhood and talk to my neighbors. I love it when, I left the house and went to Chicago a couple months ago, and a neighbor called me and said, your garage door is open all night. Do you want me to come across the street and close it for you? That you need neighbors for. So that's all part of quality of life. And that, for that reason, I think we need a balance. Certain number of short-term rentals to meet the needs of visitors, the needs of tourists, but we also need a balance of year-round residents so they feel a sense of community. Because first and foremost, that's what South Haven is. It's a community of people. Thanks.
Just real quick, I had the pleasant opportunity to attend a ribbon-cutting of the new Michigan Maritime Museum, and it is a real gem in the community. And, you know, couple that also with the new senior center, it just shows there's a lot of really good things going on in South Haven. And the community should be very proud of what the community has accomplished in those two facilities. And the other facilities, you know, you got the new library and stuff, too. So that's it.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight and all your comments. Again, I echo what Joe said about short-term rentals and also making sure that the city's providing the answers that they can for residents when they ask for them without unnecessary barriers. I feel like as, if we're as transparent and forthcoming as we can be, it just builds this great relationship with one another that we need here. And I do think that having Mary Hasley on the committee for the ordinance recodification would be awesome. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Very good, thank you.
And Mike, Griffin, I was thinking about Mr. Campbell's comment about, did this remodel happen without the proper permits? Is this maybe, this is something for you to think about. When our code enforcement people are out, because like George said, we have, or you said, we have different inspectors for different things, but we have code enforcement out there running around. They can be the eyes and ears for us. Is that something we could add to their plate while they're out checking the height of lawn and stuff like that? Could they also kind of keep an eye out for buildings that's going on that?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you with a level of confidence, I think that's what our team's doing right now.
That's what they do.
We obviously, you know, we're limited by the number of folks we have at any given time. And again, it doesn't mean everything's going to be seen. I'm not familiar with the specific situation that was mentioned today, so I probably wouldn't be appropriate to comment more, but I'm happy to look into it.
But I was thinking, the code enforcement guys are out there. People, people, I don't know if they're all guys, and they can be our eyes. And then my other comment was, you know, the, we were talking about the height thing. Thanks to Mary Hasley for catching that height situation, and we're trying to fix that. And the comment that staff changes, well, the public's certainly not happy with that answer. We're not happy with that answer. And we want, we certainly want to get these things fixed, and that's why I'm really excited that we'll get this codification process. Then we'll get into those things like lot coverage. Walt spoke about lot coverage. Mr. Placati spoke about lot coverage. My, the 500 block of Bailey where I live, there are no sidewalks, so we can't measure, we have to use the lot lines. So there's inconsistencies, and that hopefully this codification process will clean that up for us, and it'll be a lot quicker. And I know Griffin's very excited about it because it's that important, and I'm getting more more excited about it as these things keep to come, coming to us. And so I can't wait to get that going and underway and so people can easily understand it. So those are my comments.
No comments.
Good man. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I just would like to start by saying I was here, thoughts and prayers for the families who lost loved ones in the recent drownings. It was a lot of fun. Our UNC students are here. Hopefully Zoe, Mercy, Michael, and Sebastian are not still up watching this meeting, they're doing something fun. It was entertaining, I will say. We got, we had the privilege of, we got, they got to house with us their last week in town, and, no, the one night before they're getting ready to present, I think they're probably three or four in the morning, they're all down there just hashing out short-term rentals. I'm like, oh, good, you just think about it tonight. So it was kind of, but they did a great job, I will say. A lot of good information. It was totally of their own, it was, you know, that was what their bright young minds came up with, it was encouraging to see what they came up with, some good ideas, and I encourage you, if you haven't seen their work, to go on the website and go check it out. And on that, just nice to see the economic development stuff as we start talking about tonight. I mean, that's good stuff, right? That's kind of exciting stuff. I mean, a lot of employers trying to add jobs, expansions going on, one we heard about, some we know are going to happen, we didn't hear about yet tonight, well, we'll be sharing those. George mentioned the Maritime Museum, senior center, library, lots of good stuff. So all encouraging, all good, all positive, moving forward. So on that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.